I hereby call the meeting to order. Jared, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you for the mayor. Councilwoman Fasenelli.
Present.
Councilman Mills.
Present.
Councilwoman Polly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett.
Present.
Mayor Reese.
Here, thank you so much. Today, I would like to ask Daniel Weisman from Troop 531 if he'd lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask all those in the audience to please silence your cellphones or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcomes you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to speak on an item contained on the agenda, please approach the podium at the time the item is being considered. After I recognize you, state your name and address for the record prior to providing your comments. Speakers will be limited to a time period of three minutes in most cases. If you wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please do so during the time listed for oral communications. In our little city, we had two folks recently that have passed away. One person, I'd like to mention a couple things about. Her name is Paula German, wife of John German. John German is a surgeon at CHOC, has lived here forever, and on my little street, there are two homes. Paula German and John German live next door to me, so they're very dear to me. They're just the best neighbors it could be. I just love them so much. And Paula passed of lung cancer about a week ago. So, that's a story with Paula. She's going to be greatly missed. The other person that passed away recently was a resident by the name of Judy Johnson. Does anyone up here on council, would you like to say a few words?
I do. She lives right down the street from me on Laconia, right around the corner. I'm sorry, can you hear me now? She is, she's one of the first people I met, and what I can say about Judy, Judy and Wayne Johnson both, one of the most joyful, fun, funny people I've ever known. She always, always had a smile on her face. I never saw her down. She was just a great member of the community, loved to have fun, loved to go to parties. But the thing about her that I appreciated, from the very first time that I moved here, she had always had the polling place in her home, in her garage. People would go and vote there, and when they moved it over to Villa Park Elementary Schools, she was still in charge of the polling place. She had a great commitment to ensuring that elections were well-run in this city and that there was a well-run polling place. She was there all day. She was always there, no matter how many other volunteers came and went, she and her husband. And she was even joyful in that work. And you know, that's a long day for some folks, and they can get kind of grumpy. She never was. So, I appreciated that. It's a huge hole. It's just a huge hole. And I'm going to miss her, and I know there are a lot of people in this community that are really going to miss her.
Thank you, Deborah. So, I'd like to ask for 30 seconds of silence, and we will remember Judy Johnson and Paula German. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, our first presentation is an update from the Villa Park Community Services Foundation. Looks like we have Mr. Bill Nelson to come up here.
I'm Bill Nelson. I'm here to give the report for the foundation. I want to tell you about the first annual Villa Park dog adoption event that was held this past weekend. It was led by Carol and Terry Dunzing. It was unqualified success. A total of six to eight dogs from Love Bugs Rescue, the Orange County Animal Shelter, and the German Shepherd Rescue may have been adopted pending completion of the required interviews and paperwork for the rescues. The organization at shelter was thrilled to have this public exposure and answer many questions about other adoptable dogs, fostering licenses, and more. The shelter took in a huge amount, mountain of donated blankets, towels, and beds to take back to the shelter to be used for warmth and protection for the animals from the cold concrete floors. There's a constant flow of local families throughout the morning, all with positive feedback. Attendance estimated to be over 300 people coming from Villa Park and the Orange County community. They visit dogs and vendors, purchase raffle tickets, or WWAF or Walk With A Friend t-shirts. It was truly a community event. The Villa Park Women's League staffed outreach booths as well as the Orange County parks. Members of Villa Park Rotary were present, as well as some of the city council members also stopped by. Some special moments were also left with those present. For example, the dogs from the shelter and the rescue, many of them spent a great deal of time in dog kennels or in a crate. It was heartwarming to see them enjoying walking and playing on the grass and having a day of sunshine. It was also apparent they enjoyed their walks and acting with other dogs, all the human attention they got received. It was wonderful to see so many community members arrive with their dogs and enjoying such a relaxed atmosphere. This was the first event on the Green Bell and the first Villa Park dog adoption event. It was a financial success, thanks to our generous donors, thanks to volunteers such as Bob Bell selling t-shirts, Bev and Rich Almer selling raffle tickets, Mike Knowles even donated his time. He helped set up and tear down many of the booths. And thanks to the many volunteers that helped to make this fun event possible. That, my report on the dog adoption, and I want to remind you, don't forget about Halloween Fest that's also coming up this month, Wednesday the 30th of October, from 4:30 to 7:30, right here in the Villa Park Town Center. And that concludes my report. Is there any questions?
No, I just have a comment. I heard nothing but good things about it. I'm so sorry I wasn't there, but Paula's funeral was actually that day, so obviously I chose that.
We'll forgive you for that.
Okay, I appreciate it. I'm really sorry I missed so. It sounds like a wonderful event.
It was. From all accounts, it was a fantastic event.
Awesome.
And it was also a very financial success, success for the dogs as well as everyone that attended.
Well, I, you know, I would like to say, first of all, I was really upset when I found it was the same date that I had to be across the country. But I think that we should give big props to Terry and Carol Dunzing for bringing a brand-new, you know, event to the city. Every time we have something new that we add, and I know they just did tremendous work, and I just appreciated that, that they did that.
They did, along with the many volunteers that they had to do it. It was a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, our next presentation is an update from the Orange County Fire Authority. Will Battalion Chief please step up to the podium, Mr. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Division Chief Chris Concepcion, your local fire chief. And as an update for OCFA, in the last 30 days, we responded to 35 calls within Villa Park, the majority of them being EMS calls, 24 of them exactly. And unfortunately, yesterday morning, we responded on a fatal drowning, and there was nothing that we were able to do. We pronounced the victim dead at the scene. On a brighter note, however, our firefighters did go to a library event that was what they called a firefighter meet and greet with 35 elementary school kids today. And from what I understand, the firefighters had more fun than the kids did. So, that was, that was a good thing. And just as a reminder, as the previous speaker had mentioned, Halloween is coming up, and there's going to be a lot of trick-or-treaters, I'm sure, in Villa Park, and the streets can sometimes get a little dark. So, make sure the kids are wearing something bright so that we don't have to go on any medical aids on kids getting hit by cars. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Finally, the monthly update on law enforcement matters. Lieutenant Gunsel.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Apologize for the dress, you know, I've been on vacation. So, came for tonight. There's, if you look at the, just the Part 1 crimes, I was a little upset until I looked at, drilled down into it. We had 10, as opposed to five last month for Part 1 crimes. However, seven of those incidents were at the local schools. The assault with a deadly weapon, which you folks all know about, where the suspect sprayed the female in the face and then ignited the liquid, that was one of them. The rest were, you know, for instance, Serra Villa Middle School involving cellphones which were taken from unattended backpacks or lockers, handheld video game or game boy stolen from an unattended desk at the high school, unattended cellphone was taken from the high school. So, those sort of things really pump up our numbers. We had, other than that, we had two priority or Part Ones that I was concerned about. So, other than that, most of it happened at the school or either elementary or the junior high or the high school. So, that's all I have. I don't have the rest stats for, because I haven't been in a week. I was, I was close to the other Villa Park, which is, this one's much nicer. There was a high of 45 yesterday when I left, so. Anybody have any questions for me?
I was just going to ask for the "we caught them" report, but you already answered that one, so.
Yeah, I don't have that this month.
I have a question. With the incident that occurred, yes, the drowning in the city, we found out from the Orange County Register, by reading it online, actually, and then we alerted, I think Mr. Barnett alerted the city manager. That's a significant event for any city, yeah. Did something go wrong not to alert us?
I think the only thing that went wrong is when I got notified, I was in the air. I didn't have, we got home at 11 o'clock last night, and I, when I turned everything on is when I found out about it, because our watch commander's log comes out. And because I'm on vacation, the normal notifications went to my relief, because I have an automatic, you know, reply. So, the department commander, who would normally notify me, didn't even notify me. He notified my replacement. So, I found out about it probably when you did, or last night when I read it. So, yeah, that, that was a, I guess my replacement should have been notified, which I didn't do. Anything significant needs to be brought to Jared's attention so he could put it out. So, but that's not something, I dropped the ball on that one. That's not something I told him to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Gunsel?
Don't feel bad. The fire department didn't give us notice either, so.
I think Chris is going to talk about that.
I wanted to kind of address that. I want to apologize on behalf of OCFA for not providing you the notification. I, too, was not notified until later in the day, actually, by Mr. Hildebrand that there had been a drowning in the city. So, I wasn't aware of it. We have taken some action internally to make sure that if anything like that happens, especially within Villa Park, that I am notified so that I can in turn notify you in a timely manner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we move to the time for oral communications on matters not otherwise appearing on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city council. If you wish to address the city council, please step to the podium and state your name and address. Oral communications will be limited to three minutes for individual speakers. Do we have any speakers this evening? I see one.
This is just, my name's Lori Kbrook-Churney. I think you've seen me up here a few times. I live on 18532 Valley Drive, and my husband was, last week, was out locking the dog around maybe 5:15 over, I'm not too familiar with the area yet, but I think it was Robin Circle, where the hole in the wall is on Lemon, to get into that neighborhood. And he was walking, and my husband is six foot three, and he just noticed a teenager come up on a 10-speed and opened someone's mailbox, mailbox, grabbed the mail out, and took off. My husband yelled at him, "Hey, hey!", you know, but you think the kid is going to stop? No, he just took off. He didn't even turn around to see anything. And of course, my husband was with the dog, so he couldn't chase. But he brought, you know, came home and told me that, because we have a locked mailbox. And previous, about a week before that, I took my daughter to Serra Villa and on where Lemon turns into, I guess, Valley, right there, I saw what I thought was trash on the side, and it was mail, like someone just threw it out the window driving down the street. So, after he told me that, I said, you know, I saw some, some mail on the side of the road, so maybe this has happened more than once. So, I'm just letting you know that my husband did see that incident happen. He, as you probably know, his, his parents lived here, and we got their house, and they got a lockbox about, I don't know, 10 years ago, because there was a rash of some mailbox things. And you think, well, you know, we don't always go out to our mail every day. So, some people, if they didn't go out to their mailbox every day, they wouldn't even know their mail was missing, because there'd be two or three days' worth of mail in there. So, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that there is possibly a way you can put it on the website or maybe notify the city that they might want to invest in that, or if they notice anything like that. And, you know, he just came home and told me. If, if it was me, I would have called right away, but he doesn't do that. So, if I happen to see something like that, I will definitely call the police. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because I think that's a horrible thing, because there's probably people that depend on checks and whatnot. And it was a kid. He said it was about, probably about a 16- or 17-year-old kid, so.
And obviously, we assume he didn't live there, right? I mean, did we talk to the resident, or no?
That's what I said. I go, "Did you go knock on the door and tell the people?" And he said, "No, no, no." He just does not like to get himself involved in anything. So, he tells me, and now I have to come and tell you.
I'm really glad you mentioned this. I mean, it sounds nasty and ugly, and I think it probably was. I know probably about three months ago, on our little street, it's kind of a little dead-end street, but we found a bunch of mail from, actually Newport Beach, just throwing in the Junipers. So, my wife and I went, "What is that?" And we grabbed it, looked at it, and it was a bunch of mail that someone stole from Newport Beach, drove here, and read it and threw it in the bushes.
Right.
So, this definitely happens, and I know I don't have a locking mailbox, and probably everyone should probably have one.
That's why I wanted to-
This is a good reminder.
Maybe you can put it up on the website, just a little thing up there, because people don't really think about that. I had, where I previously lived, I had a credit card statement that the mailman delivered to a neighbor's box, because we had the community boxes. And just because I was making my bills out, I realized, wait, where's my, you know, credit card statement? And I called the bank, and right off, when they pulled it up, there was "pshhh" from the internet, because all they needed was the number off of the statement. Now, they don't do that. They only put the last four, but before that. So, I'm, you know, I know that it can happen, and just want to let you know that's all.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Okay.
Evening, council. Jim Warden, 10021, Sycamore Street, Villa Park. Well, with the demise of our 76 gas station, we've now created the Villa Park Ghetto here in our own parking lot. And I'd like to comment on that to the point that, I know there have been a couple rumors that, well, the bank is or is not going to go in, et cetera, blah, blah, blah. Well, I frankly don't care whether Chase goes there, goes broke, goes bankrupt, goes out of business, because I will never do any business with Chase, as will a lot of Villa Park citizens. However, this council has seen in the past to issue citations, issue notices, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, on various residences and such. I'd like to see this council take immediate action. Let's notify the owners. You have 72 hours to clean this place up and keep it clean, whatever's going forward. This is a trash heap, and we, while we have the various little homes scattered around, I was amazed here, even on Old Villa Park and Center, they actually put grass in the corner house. My God, it's a miracle. It's been that way for 25 years, until about three weeks ago. So, now we have it in our own front yard. I'd like to see this council take direction through city manager to, don't send this guy a mail, get, you know, dial the phone, call, get out here, or we're cleaning it up, and it happens on next Wednesday, one way or the other, and we will bill you and file a lien against the property. I think it's appropriate. It's an absolute shame that we've let this thing go. Now, whether Chase goes there or not, I guess there's been rumors, yes, they are, no, they're not, but we got to get this place cleaned up. And it shows when people drive into our, our own neighborhoods, it drives, now it's right in our front door. So, let's do something about it. And I expect everyone of council members to take immediate action and do it tonight. Thank you.
Jared, does anybody know what authority we even, we have to act on that? Because I've had that question myself, but I, I'm not sure what we can do. Does anybody, any question?
There are certain procedures we have to follow. And we can't go in and say, "Two hours from now and clean it up just because we want to." We will issue a letter, I believe it's 10 days, notice per our municipal code, and after that 10 days, yes, we can go in there and clean it up. But we'd have to get the proper warrants and procedures. So, what I'll do is place a phone call to the property owners tomorrow, ask them to clean it up, and I'll just get a letter out. We do have to follow the process, fortunately.
I think that's also confounded by the fact that the county and the EPA are involved with all this, too. There's other permits that they're, they're waiting on to move forward. I think that's the real issue, from what I know. I agree with Mr. Warden, it is an eyesore, but I think it's also held up from, from other jurisdictions. So, I think. We need to get educated, though. Typically, gas stations, they have remediation, and, you know, there's issues like Greg is mentioning, so.
That being said, they can still take care of the property and the outside edges. They're allowing the trees and the shrubberies to die and, and leaves and trash to pile up. That doesn't need to happen, regardless of the fact that they're waiting for the county cleanup permits to go through.
True. Okay.
So, I think that's a good solution. They're probably going to respond to that in a positive way.
I'm sure they will.
Keeping for, you know, we'll call them, and I'm sure they'll get to it.
The other thing, I'd like to go back to this woman from Valley. I'm sorry, I did not catch your first name. But this, this is something that we're hearing about more and more, and also, I've been hearing multiple reports of people going through the trash, going through your recycle to pull out information. So, we, maybe a couple of years ago, had a special evening meeting that the Sheriff's Department put on for us about protecting identity theft, and it was very useful. I mean, I learned a lot of things that I didn't know, and it's been quite some time since we've done that. I'm wondering if we might consider doing something like that again, and get the, you know, a neighborhood watch kind of event where we talk about some of these things, because we have seen a slight uptick. We've got the situation with realignment that's causing issues, and maybe we can get a briefing from the Sheriff's Department from that. Anyway, that would be a suggestion. That might be a good time to invite Sheriff Sandra Hutchins to be here in our community. It's just an idea.
Great, thank you. Okay, our first hearing tonight is to review safe and sane fireworks and consider our options for next year's holiday. Jared, do you have a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, for the first time in many years, state-approved safe and sane fireworks were permitted in Villa Park. Sales were limited to June 28th through-
Sales were limited to June 28th through July 4th, and only two of the three allotted permits were issued. One went to the Villa Park High School Gridiron Booster Club, or Football, and the other went to Villa Park High School Instrumental Music Program, the band. Each stand was responsible for securing its own location. The band was here in the parking lot, the Football Club was on the high school's campus, and July 4th was the only day that state-approved safe and sane fireworks were approved to be discharged here in the city. Throughout that time period, Fire Authority staffing levels remained the same for the entire period, and Sheriff's Department increased staffing levels on July 4th by three deputies for a total of four in the city, and the Chief of Police was also here driving around that evening. Firework-related calls for the time period, and I broke it down from the time period of June 28th through July 4th, so the week that sales were allowed. There were four OCFA-related calls this year, and 21 sheriff-related calls for service this year. Last year, OCFA did not show any calls, and sheriffs showed a total of seven calls during that time period. According to some of the reports and the on-duty sheriff deputies that evening, most of the complaints received did not have to deal with the state-approved safe and sane fireworks. They had to deal with large, and loud, and dangerous fireworks, your mortars, mortar rockets, Roman candles, stuff that exploded in the air, which is illegal under California law. We know this, because responding deputies were unable to locate a number of the actual calls and saw the fireworks in the air. So tonight, the City Council is expected to hold discussion related to safe and sane fireworks and take action as it so desires. Proposed actions include taking no action and letting ordinance number 2013-574 expire tomorrow, thereby banning fireworks in Villa Park. You can take no action, let the ordinance expire, and place on the November 2014 a ballot measure for the voters of Villa Park, so that they can directly decide the issue. You can extend the ordinance to continue allowing safe and sane fireworks indefinitely, until it's banned by a future council, or you can extend the ordinance through next year's holiday for another trial period, another year essentially, and then place on the November 2014 a ballot measure, so that the voters can decide. With that, we are available for questions.
Great, thank you, Jared. Councilmembers, any questions of staff, before I open it up to the public? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to come speak to this item?
Mayor, council members, I'm M.J. Lucero, address 18501 Jacatol. I've been here, and I've been vocal opposing the fireworks, and at the last meeting that we had, I think it was probably June, I tried to archive the minute notes, and I was unable to do it today, but we were told at that meeting by the council that a special ballot costs too much, and that we would not put a ballot out to determine whether we would have use of fireworks and approved by the community. We were told that we would put on this ballot this coming up year, that we would put out to the community and let the community speak, not just a few people who were opposed to it, or a few people that are in favor of fireworks. And I'm asking the council to stand up and be accountable for what they said in the last meeting, and have the ballot put on for this coming year, and do not make any decisions until that ballot has been received and counted. Thank you.
Thank you, M.J.
Hi, I'm Nicole Jones, 10292, Vietcorta. This year, I am Saravilla PFSO President, and we participated along with the Football Boosters at the Villa Park High School fireworks booth. And on behalf of the Saravilla PFSO, I would just like to thank the council for establishing this ordinance for the fireworks. We made over $8,600 for Saravilla, and if you're unfamiliar with the fundraising at Saravilla, it really is minimal, because it's a two-year school, the parents really don't get invested, you know, either personally or financially at that school, so those earnings were really a boon to our organization, and those dollars will go towards a lot of very, very positive changes at the school for the students. Also, on a personal note, it was just wonderful to celebrate, you know, our country in that way on the Fourth of July. My family and I love doing it. I grew up here in Villa Park, and that's the way we celebrated here in Villa Park when I was growing up, and it was fabulous. I would, though, very much like Mrs. Lucero said, like to see the voters have a say, so I would like to see the ordinance extended until next year, and it put on the ballot in 2014, so thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Nicole.
Good evening. My name is Chuck J. I'm the Director of Music over at Villa Park, and my wife claims I live in the band room there.
That's a good one.
I would like to thank, I would like to thank the council for the opportunity you provided our students and our families to experience such a positive event, and not only in terms of financial gain, but in terms of interaction with our local community, in terms of interaction with our police and fire departments in a positive way. Of course, my students always interact in a positive way with the police and fire department, but it was a wonderful opportunity for them to get some insights into business, into organization, to discipline, to structure, all things that are part of the educational experience. And it's true in public education today that the community and the school have to work as a team, in order for the school to provide the best education for our students. And I think that this is an example of the community doing just that, providing the opportunity, providing the oversight to make sure that the school organizations that participated did so in a safe and sane manner, did so that were organized, and had a good accounting of what the revenues were. It was a positive experience all the way around. The money's been put to very good use across the performing arts. Both booths were a tremendous success. I think both booths were a very positive experience for everybody that participated, and I thank you again for that opportunity, and hope that the opportunity continues to exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Jim Warden, 10021, Sycamore Street. I'd like to point out that I certainly think the fundraising activities that went on are a good thing. However, we probably had more illegal fireworks set off of Villa Park this last Fourth of July than we've obviously had in years. My neighbor behind me, and I probably won of the 21 calls, went on for 45 minutes and blew off $3,400 worth of aerial devices. Roman candles, large, large aerial displays, and as I live, from my home, I can see across the top of Mesa, there were numerous, numerous aerial rockets that went off. So whatever effective enforcement, and it's not to try to belittle our police department, whatever effective enforcement that we thought was in place didn't happen. So as a result of that, while I'm not necess, I mean, I could be, I could argue both ways on the safe and sane stuff, the sparklers, that kind of business, the little fountains. However, these devices that are going off, and I think all of you, if you live here, if you didn't see it, you must have been inside with the doors closed and the blinds closed, this stuff happens, so I think it's difficult to deny that this all went on. Our ability to enforce it with four sheriff officers is absolutely, we're asking for the sublime and the ridiculous. I think I agree with the lady who suggests that we put this to a vote, and in that method, we're either gonna win it, or we're gonna lose it. It's not, it's, I think that's the best solution. However, let's not sit up here and say, "Well, gee, it didn't hap, it did happen", and I think every one of you know that there were a significant number of illegal fireworks that went off in this city.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up for council to discuss the item. Who wants to go first?
I'll start.
All right, Yada.
I had the pleasure of working both booths. I worked the band as being a booster, I worked the school, being a parent of two children at Saravilla. And when I sold the fireworks, I asked the people where they lived, just to be friendly, what their name was, and what they were gonna do, and they were so happy that they were going to be spending the Fourth of July at home, in the front of their home, letting off fireworks that were legal, that they could tell their children that they didn't have to hide them in the backyard and not do them in the front yard, so the parents of the other homes could see. In doing that, I myself stayed home Fourth of July. I live on Vida. There was not another home on the entire street of Vida that did fireworks. The home on the corner was on, right where Roberto is, and that was it. There were no aerial fireworks seen, except from the El Medina area that we could see. I had at least 30 people at my home, including Councilmember Mills and his wife. I also had the sheriff come by my home and routinely drive around. I think Deborah Pauley also drove by our home. So we had no incidents, and when we were finished, we cleaned up, and the next morning, you had no idea that we had done any fireworks, and everyone had a good time, and the average age there probably was 12, and we did have some babies there also, and we kept them on the grass. They didn't hold the sparklers, and they didn't get hurt, because we were responsible parents. So I have to say that in driving around the community the next morning, I didn't see any litter, I didn't see any dirt. I listened to the 911 calls that came in. I don't believe the disk on the Fourth of July had really, I think, only 14 calls or 15 calls, and out of those, four of them were duplicate people called. So the incidents that some of the residents are talking about didn't occur in the city of Villa Park. And in fact, we've had less, on my street, we didn't have any bottle rockets go off, and I have to tell you, three doors down, they go off every single year. Every year, we have the kids take them off. So this year, maybe they were on vacation, I don't know, but they didn't go off. It was successful. I'd like to see it happen again, a lot, put a lot of smiles on people's face. And this isn't about money, it's about families enjoying what we grew up with in this city and in other cities that we came from. That's it.
Rick, you want to go next?
Yeah, I mean, my comments would somewhat mirror Councilwoman Pauley's comments.
Fascinating.
Well-
I doubt-
Just to make the record-
Fascinating.
You should know.
I was reading, and I was reading something and talking at the same time, so. You know, I saw a lot of celebration. There was a couple hundred thousand dollars almost of fireworks that were purchased. A lot of that probably went out of Villa Park, but a lot of it stayed in Villa Park. The stands couldn't keep the $500 sets in stock, and I will tell you, I think most of that went into Villa Parks. I saw a number of people buying them, and they were all Villa Park people that I saw purchasing them. So I think people had good times with their families. You know, I did some when I was little, before we approved this, I had some families say, "You know, we got to do this, and I kind of resent the fact that we can't do it now. My kid hasn't even seen a sparkler." So there's that side of it, and I was glad to see people be able to do it. The schools benefited. I'll just tell you that, that between the band, Saravilla, and the football team, they took in about $85,000 net revenue, and I understand that replaced the uniforms and the safety equipment for basically the whole football team. So I know those football players get injured every year. So to me, you replace all their safety gear, you're probably gonna save some kids some injuries, hopefully, and I think that's a meaningful issue, especially since there were really no incidents. There was no fires, and it was a bad, dry year, and I was a little concerned about that. That was probably the biggest concern I had when we approved it. It was a nasty, dry year, we had no fires, we had no injuries. I'm just thinking about all the objections there were to this when we discussed it. Fires, injuries, none of those happened. One of the big problems kept coming up, "It's gonna be a filthy mess, the streets are all gonna be a mess, it's gonna be terrible." The mayor and I drove around about 10:30 that night, we couldn't find one speck of trash on the streets. They seemed to be swept, many of them had been hosed down, and we couldn't find any trash at all. I don't think we had to spend the money that the city got for the trash, for the street sweeping, because nothing was dirty. The, when I'm on the Fire Authority Board, and when I was there, the Fire Authority officers that were talking about it, and one of the comments I received was that Station 23, which is apparently over here, just outside Villa Park, had some staff from Santa Ana who'd been dealing with this stuff for years, and one of the comments was, "My God, if you're gonna have a Fourth of July, that's the way to run it." That city was all over it. There was hoses at every location, it was well-managed, da-da-da-da-da, and if you're gonna have a Fourth of July, that's the way to do it." So that's what I got out of the fire department. They don't support it, I'm sure someone will be here objecting to it today and telling us that something could happen, it's dangerous, but that was, that was the comments I received. I frankly, and then there was the gangs concern. I'm not aware there was any gang problems. So honestly, I haven't heard one negative incident. The school's got a lot of money, people enjoyed it, we've enhanced the safety for the football team, so based on the performance I've seen, I'm not really sure why we wouldn't do this. And I'll also be the first one to concede that when we were putting this together, I said, "Let's approve it, see how it goes", and there was a lot of opposition. "Let's put it on the ballot. It's too expensive to put it on now, but let's put it on the next ballot." And I made that offer, and I'm gonna stand by that offer. So from my perspective, if that's what people want, you know, there's a cost for it, but it's much less next year, and so the only issue is, does the community want to pick up the cost? But I have no problem with that. I said that before, and I stand by it. I think it should go again based on what happened, plus we'll get another year of review to see what happens. Maybe it gets worse, maybe it gets better, although I don't know how much better it could get, but I certainly won't oppose putting it on the ballot. I said it before, and I stand by it, so that's my comments.
Thank you, Rick. Jared, if I'm not mistaken, we could not get it on the ballot this year, is that correct? Is it too fast, or? It probably is.
There wasn't an election this year. So in order for us to put it on the ballot, it would've cost 20, we would've had to do our own standalone election, which is $20,000 to $25,000. The next closest, I was just Googling right now, upcoming election to consolidate with the county for is the June 3, 2014 statewide primary election. The cost to place it on that ballot is roughly $10,000 to $12,000, because it's not consolidated with our general municipal election, which is next November. Cost to put it on November 2014 is about $3,000.
Okay, that's good input. So obviously, I was in favor of the fireworks. As you all know, I've driven the streets in the fire truck for many a years, and we always have had illegal fireworks in Villa Park. I cannot say with a good conscience that we had more this year, and I looked. As Mayor Protem Barnett said, we drove the city at 10:30. I did go to a block party, I really enjoyed it, had a great time, remind me of my youth. It was safe, we had water, it was done in the street where it is safer, it was not done hidden in the backyards where there are flammables. I thought it went picture-perfect, I was very pleased with it. I enjoyed it, I liked to see the nonprofits getting the $85,000, I thought that was wonderful. So I'm definitely in favor of doing it again next year. I also don't have a problem putting it on the ballot. The problem, the only problem with the ballot is it cost us all three grand, and we would have to do it in November, which is okay. I can't imagine we'd all agree to spend 10 grand on it prior to, that's a lot of money. So I would probably propose that we go forth with it next year, and we put it on the ballot. That, you know, if that's what people want, and again, we're only hearing from a very few people that want that, by the way. So these very few people are saying they want to spend three grand of the taxpayer money. I don't fear putting it on the ballot by, I have no skin in the game, I mean, I want to see it stay, but, you know, I have no skin in the game whether it stays or doesn't stay. I prefer it to stay, because I think it's a really neat family thing. So, you know, there was a lot of comments made, as Mayor Protem Barnett mentioned, about gang members and, you know, illegals, you know, coming in here and doing it, and people showing up in your front yard, you know, none of that happened, and, you know, "Oh, you're only gonna make five grand." Well, I think a lot was said in what we all saw, so I'm definitely in support of continuing it next year. I would maybe say, if we end up not wanting to do, put it on the ballot to save three grand, certainly after Fourth of July next year, by all means, we would not just have this go on forever. We would then have another council meeting after, discuss it, how did it go? Did we have problems? If we did, we can it. So I'm open to the ballot, I'm open to a discussion after, but I don't want to see it just verbatim continue for ever. Deborah.
Thank you. We didn't, we, this was a late passout, and I don't know if you're- We didn't, we, this was a late passout, and I don't know if you're Chief Concepcion able to brief us on what happened in Orange County? And, and many of the things, the issues that were brought forward just to respond to some of what's said were actually just pulled directly from the grand jury report. As those of us went to go investigate it, we were looking at that report and what was happening in other cities. And, and of course, being concerned, could that happen to ours? So, those were, it wasn't said, "This was going to happen," it's, "This could be happening." And your first year, most people don't know that Villa Park has made it legal, it could, it could happen in years' future. But I, I'd rather get a little bit of a feel for what, what's happened in Orange County because I know that more cities have been allowing safe and sane fireworks, as you guys pointed out during your arguments.
We're up to nine now.
Well, actually, I think Huntington Beach polled there, so I think we're back down to eight. But if you could just help me understand, and all of us understand, what's happened as we've increased, seen this increase in cities allowing the use and sale of safe and sane fireworks?
Mayor Councilmembers, we, the, the report that Councilwoman Pauley is referring to is the 2013 Independence Day Post-Action Report. That's done by Orange County Fire Authority in conjunction with all the other fire departments in the county every year. And some of the important numbers to, to bring out there is, in 2012, there were nineteen injuries as a result of fireworks, and then in 2013, there were thirty-nine that were reported, so I forget what the exact percentage of, of, almost a, actually a doubling of the, of the number of injuries. I think the alarming part of that specifically is the fact that most of the, most of the people that were getting hurt, a majority of them were children getting hurt as a result of fireworks. Most of those, nine of them were attributed to illegal fireworks, while nine of the injuries were attributed to, to safe and sane fireworks, and twenty-one of them were undetermined. There was one injury, I think the worst injury was where a, a person blew his hand off as a result of a, an illegal firework.
Illegal.
And then the other important number to, to bring up, while there were no incidents in, in Villa Park as far as injuries or fires, there was a significant increase as far as fire loss as far as the county is concerned, because in Buena Park, we did have a house that caught fire as, directly as a result of a, a firework landing on its roof and causing two-hundred-and-two-thousand worth of, of damage. The, the total damage estimates for the entire county were two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars for, as far as property loss. Unfortunately, just kind of a personal aside, that, that, that family in Buena Park, I happened to go up there because I had PIO duty that, that day, and it was the couple's thirty-ninth anniversary, so unfortunately, they were unable to, they were unable to enjoy their, their thirty-ninth anniversary in their own home because they lost their home as a result of the fire. So, as you can see, there was an increase from 2012 to 2013, both in the number of injuries, there was more than a doubling of injuries throughout the county, and an increase in the property loss as far as fireworks are concerned.
Thank you, Chief Concepcion, and, and actually, Buena Park has allowed safe and sane fireworks for quite some time, and I do specifically remember, is that true?
Yes, yes, they have allowed, I don't know how many years they've allowed it, but they have allowed the sale of safe and sane for quite a while.
And I, I think I do remember that that one, it was either that one or Garden Grove, and I, I can't remember, that was where they were specifically talking about how, over the years, over the time that they've allowed it, there'd been an increased number of people coming in, and it was getting more and more difficult to control what was going on. And specifically, that the, allowing the safe and sane fireworks was allowing a masking of the illegal fireworks. So, I'd asked for this report, I, I'm going through it now because we just got it. Actually, I called Jared this afternoon and said, "Where's the report I asked for?" It, it matters because you can start seeing a trend. We're lucky, that's, that's really my take on this. I feel like we dodged a bullet this year, this was the first year, but it really is only a matter of time. I, I took a, a different tact on, on all of this. From the get-go, I thought, "Well, I am going to personally observe things." I went by the fireworks stands, both of them, multiple times, the whole time that they were open, including at different times of the day, to see what kind of foot traffic they had, how it was being run, whether it closed on time, whether there was a guard on duty. And what I can say, and I want to start out with a positive, is that, as far as that goes, everything was absolutely perfectly copacetic. They did actually everything they should have done, and so no fault whatsoever can rest with those that actually executed the sales. So, that, that part, I think, is important. Everyone here has mentioned the, the dollar amount that was made, you know, I know what it's like to do the fundraising for schools. My kids are older now, but I've been there, so I can appreciate that, but, you know, sometimes money isn't everything. And so I, when I look at this, I have to look at the potential impact. As a councilwoman, is it my job to ensure that the Booster Club has the money that it needs, or is it my job, my first and foremost job, to ensure that the, the people and the property in my community are safe? Well, that's my number-one job. So, that's what I look at first and foremost. And so I'm looking at, what's the potential going to be down the road? I've lived here for thirteen years, you're absolutely right, Mayor Reese, every year there are fireworks that go off, they, they just do. I've been at parties, a lot of times I'm, I'm down, you know, on, near the ocean so I can see some good shows. This year, I did not do that, but there have always been some, legal and illegal, being blown off in the city, but it's fairly low-key. This year, what I did notice was that fireworks started in our community a couple of weeks before the 4th of July, and they were going off most every night. Instead of attending a party, which I normally would have done, I decided I would go out, not at ten-thirty at night, or ten-forty-five, or whatever you said, when it was dark and the parties were pretty much shutting down, but I would go out during it. And so that's what I did. I got in the car, and I went out of my cul-de-sac, which is their glorious circle, and drove down La Conia, and the first thing I saw was that little cut-through street into Orange. All of the residents of that little enclave of Orange had their party, guess where? On the Villa Park side of that little cut-through street, and they were having a great time. Didn't look like they were doing anything unsafe, there were aerial fireworks being blown off there, I saw them multiple times. Didn't make any calls, I was there to observe and collect as much information as I could. Drove around the corner and saw the nice little party at Councilwoman Fascinelli's house, I saw Councilman Mills, I saw our mayor, Brad Reese, also at the party, so we had three council members at one party.
Mr. Reese was not at my house.
I was not there.
I saw you.
You didn't see me, because I didn't go there.
He didn't get an invitation.
Well, there was a guy who looked just like you. He looked just like you.
He was evil.
All right.
I was going to say, it wasn't me.
The mayor's evil twin, someone who looked like it, but that was just, it was a nice party, and when I was driving by, because the, the fireworks were going off in the middle of the street, some parents yelled "Fire," or, or "Car," like you do when you're playing baseball in the street, and everybody moved to the side so I could drive through, and I just drove the streets. I focused most of my attention up in the hill area, which is our high-hazard fire zone area, because that's the area that caused, I think, all of us the most concern. It's driest, it's at greatest risk, according to the Fire Authority, according to CAL Fire, and, and according to our own observations. I mean, it's the area that is most at risk. So, I drove up and through that area. I didn't see a lot of parties, per se. There were some very sweet little gatherings where, you know, just a couple of, Grandma and Grandpa, Mom and Dad, and a little kid there by the side of the street doing their little sprinkling thing, but I saw a lot, a lot of aerials up in that area. I saw one party in particular where the smoke and fumes and sulfur just completely filled the entire street. When I saw the aerials up in that Mesa area, I actually called the Sheriff's Department at that time, because they were, our ordinance was not being enforced, and, and I was concerned about those because they were kind of rivaling Disneyland, and, and that, that needs to be shut down right away. When I came down the hill, I drove past Villa Park High School because our ordinance specifically said that you were not allowed to be on the high school property, no schools, right? No town center, specifically prohibited. I saw no fewer than five groups, perhaps six little groups of, of young people blowing off fireworks, and I think they were safe and sane, I'm not a fireworks expert, on the Villa Park High School grounds. I called the Sheriff's Department back again, because that, that needs to be nipped in the bud as well. I came back around, our town center was dead quiet. There was one white, unmarked police car, I think, parked on the side, and I was pleased to see that nothing wrong was happening there. I swung back up around because the sheriff was trying to ask me, you know, "Where, where are these aerials coming from?" Because that can't be. And I was trying to locate where those were coming from. But when I came back down to the school, there were still kids blowing off fireworks, and nothing had happened. It took me multiple times to get through the Sheriff's Department, multiple times. The phone line was busy, I was placed on hold. I also have had many reports from other residents who tried to call prior to the 4th of July to report fireworks going off. We have an enforcement problem, for sure, and that needs to be addressed. If we have an ordinance, it needs to be enforced. So, those are some of the things that I witnessed that night. I did call in twice on those two things that were expressly prohibited because I wanted them to be taken care of. I, I will point out that Huntington Beach, which has had a two-year test that started, I guess, in January 2012, their two-year trial to allow safe and sane fireworks in certain areas of the city. The fireworks were not supposed to be set off in the beach, or in the streets, or in the parks, and those rules were apparently widely ignored. Their fire chief, Patrick McIntosh, whom I, I know you know, said that legalizing state-approved fireworks meant more of the illegal variety crossing city borders, and I do believe we had many, many more illegal fireworks in the city this year than we've ever had before. When we allow safe and sane, it further allows the dangerous illegal fireworks to hide amongst the revelry. Two years ago, when fireworks were not allowed, we confiscated forty-four pounds of fireworks. Each of the last two years, we confiscated in excess of a hundred-and-forty-four pounds of fireworks, so nearly three times as much. So, that's a concern for me, that we are enforcing it, that we're enforcing it. We have, we have a city that's divided on this, and when, when we first started talking about it, because you could see the division, that, that's a bad thing right away. If it hadn't been brought up, there would have been, this, this division wouldn't have occurred. Later on tonight, we're going to be looking at our building standards. In April 2012, CAL Fire came down with mapping and had indicated to us that the high-hazard fire zone was dipping way into the northeast portion of our city, and they wanted us to declare it that for those residents, which would have been bad for those residents because you would have to divulge that when you went to resale. And under the mayor's direction, because he does have so much experience with the Fire Authority, we worked something else out where there was just an overlay placed over the entire city, increasing our building standards so as to protect against these things. But as I was reading these, these, these building standards, this is what it says about Villa Park. The jurisdiction of Villa Park, we're going to, we're going to be reading this and passing this tonight supposedly, is located in a semi-arid Mediterranean-type climate. It annually experiences extended periods of high temperatures with little or no precipitation. Hot, dry winds may, may reach speeds of seventy miles per hour or greater, and are also common to the area. These climatic conditions cause extreme drying of vegetation and common, and, and common building materials. Frequent periods of drought and low humidity add to the fire danger. This predisposes the area to large destructive fires. Then later on down here in Section 1 in D, it says, "These dry climatic conditions and winds contribute to rapid spread of even very small fires originating in high-density housing or vegetation," and that these fires spread very quickly. So, you know, for me, when I look at this, it's, it's, it's a risk that perhaps we shouldn't be taking, but we've taken, we've taken this first step, I feel like we dodged a bullet. What we need to do is, next year, ensure that the ordinance is adhered to. If your friends and neighbors are blowing off illegal, if you really want to have safe and sane fireworks available in the city, you need to say, "Stop it, you're going to ruin it for all of us." That's what needs to happen. Kids cannot be on the high school property, we need to enforce the ordinance. I'm very glad to hear all of you say that we need to take it to a vote of the people. I've still had many, many phone calls from people who were calling throughout that entire time period. I have experienced for the, two months after the 4th of July, continuing fireworks being exploded. I don't know how many of them were safe and sane, and how many of them were aerial, because I was just hearing them, that's never happened before, so I'm wondering why it's happening. I, I would urge my council colleagues to put this to a vote of the actual residents of the city of Villa Park, because they are the ones whose homes, their beautiful homes, that they've spent a lot of time and money earning, and, and that, that we are not putting those unnecessarily at risk for the sake of a few dollars, because I'm telling you, money is not everything, it just isn't. That's all I have to say.
Greg?
Yes, thank you, oh, thank you, Debra, and Brad, Rick, and Deanna. You know, I was against this at first because I was worried about unseemly elements coming into town, and that was my main issue, and the enforcement, I thought, overall, was, was, was good. I mean, we had no incidents in the end. Debra, you may be right, we did dodge a bullet on a few things here and there, there were some things that didn't get done, but I'm sure that we'll get that fixed in the future. With that said, looking at the page 10, confiscate illegal fireworks, taking out the Huntington Beach portion, a hundred-and-forty-four pounds, it's actually gone down, illegal fireworks in towns that had safe and sane fireworks, so that, that's, that's a good, that's a good point. I guess the real point from what we're looking at here is that if, if folks around, where I was, there was only illegal fireworks coming from Orange. It was all Orange where I was, but I understand a bit that other folks did not see it that way, that's just where, my perspective was that evening. But if you see that, call it in. I don't know why we didn't pick them up in the parking lot of this high school, I don't know why these didn't happen in other parts than near Orange, don't know why, but it's the first time, so we'll get a little more sophisticated as we go along, I'm sure. And with that, I am for letting it happen once more, again, next year, and putting it to vote next November, which would be the rational thing to do, as far as I'm concerned. Can we go ahead and go to a motion?
We can do that.
Well, I move that we accept Proposition Number Four.
Can you read it?
Yes, I can. Extend ordinance number 2013-574 through 2014 holiday and place on the November 2014 general municipal election, valid a measure concerning the sale and use of safe and sane fireworks so that the voters of Villa Park are allowed to directly decide the issue.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second or a substitute motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fascinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauley?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good discussion.
And just for that, in order to extend the ordinance, we'll have to bring back an amended ordinance, so we'll bring that back at a future council meeting.
With the detail, of course.
Yes, and then next summer, we'll bring back the paperwork to put it on the ballot.
What is the deadline for the ballot, to make sure we?
I don't know, off the top of my head, July, it's eighty-eight days before the November 4th election.
Okay.
We have time.
You know, just one observation on the comments about the Orange County statistics on this, I, I don't think it's fair to apply the Orange County statistics because Villa Park has kind of proven itself to be somewhat unique. This is not an average Orange County community. It's probably a little older, it may be a little more educated, and it's certainly a little more conscientious for these fireworks, as evidenced by the fire department's comments.
Yeah, I agree with that. Oh, Rick, I think you're right, but I think the main thing is that the patrolling by, by the Fire Authority and of course Lieutenant Gunsell and his folks was good.
Yeah.
There's a few little things that will get better, so.
Yep, it's good. All right, moving right along, we're ready for our second hearing. We're going to be considering the 2013 edition of the California Building Standards Codes. Jared, do you have a report, please?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every three, three years, the State Building Commission adopts various building codes here in the city. The proposed ordinance before you adopts the building code, residential code, plumbing code, mechanical code, electrical code, grain building standards, and fire code. The resolution before you adopts local findings, local conditions, to make changes to the actual code. So, what's before you is the ordinance adopting, let me go back to my paperwork, I lost it here, I apologize, California Code of Regulations Title 24, Parts 1 through 12, with our local various... various amendments. Every year, the OCFA puts together these various amendments for us, and for consistency reasons, we adopt them countywide, which is why you see the rooftop helicopter landing zone. I don't think we'll ever see one of those here in Villa Park, but needless to say, for consistency reasons, we still adopt. I've made sure that the Chapter 7A standards have transferred over. These were the standards we adopted to get out of adopting the very high fire hazard severity zone maps, as well as our fire sprinkler requirements. Any new building in California, new construction, requires fire sprinklers regardless of the square footage. In Villa Park, any construction or addition exceeding 5,500 square feet would trigger the fire sprinkler requirement. So before you is the proposed ordinance and the proposed resolution, and in order to have these adopted and in effect January 1st, which is when the state code goes into effect, we will need to introduce and adopt the first reading tonight. With that, we're available for questions.
Thank you, Jared. Any questions of staff?
I have a question. If, okay, any home that exceeds 5,500 square feet, when I'm looking at page nine of 58, okay, nine of 58, two, let's see, when an addition exceeds 2,000 square feet and the resulting area exceeds 5,500 square feet, if someone has a home that's 2,000 square feet and adds 2,000 square feet, do they need fire sprinklers?
Is 2,000 and adds 2,000?
Yeah, now you're at four. You don't need it.
The 5,500 is the?
That is?
Trigger.
Trigger.
Any other questions of staff before I open up to the public?
Does that seem inadequate?
It just was, it was odd when I read it.
Yeah.
Jared, just so I understand what we're doing here, what we're essentially seeking to do here, or being asked to, is to adopt the updated state building code standards for Villa Park. Isn't that the thrust of what we're doing here?
Yeah.
Isn't that been somewhat routinely done in the past?
It's routinely done every three years, and then OCFA prepares the local amendments for us, which place more restrictive requirements on just the state's general code. So we adopt the state's code. If we do not adopt the local amendments, January 1st, the state goes into effect. I'm not sure what the requirement is for fire sprinklers then. Any new construction, it would require it, but any addition, I'm not too sure.
Does staff, any particular concerns or comments with regard to the adoption of these that we should be aware of?
No concerns here. OCFA and our building official, Bill Tarrina, met several times to discuss this, and we routinely adopt it every year. So we just make sure that Chapter 7A and the fire sprinkler requirements transfer over.
Well, generally, we like to keep as much control locally as we can, with local interpretation, so that's why we've gone through all this.
Right. All right, is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for comments or a motion.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
I'll wait till Jared. You know, I don't understand why we would add all these verbiage about helicopter landing pads. I don't. Because, you know, code in the city is already, I think, pretty big, and now we're adding, at least just in the first reference to these, an additional four pages, right? And then there's others in the back. Is there something that requires us to do it, just to be consistent, or it's the easy way out? Oh, oh, we're going to get the big guy up here.
Good evening. Pete Panano, Deputy Fire Marshal with the Orange County Fire Authority. No, Jared's 100% right. We like to standardize our local amendments throughout jurisdictions, and we do that everywhere with the standard package. You certainly have the ability. You decided that that was something you thought was totally inappropriate for your city to take it out. But we like to standardize as much as we can.
You like it because it makes your life easier, and I wonder why we need any more pages. So we could actually take Section 202 all the way through to 412-7-6, and even the picture of exactly what the landing pad markings should look like out. I mean, we could do that. It just seems crazy to me that we would be adopting something that we know is in no way going to happen in our city. That's what local ordinances are for. If we're not going to have them look local, then what's the point? Why don't we just all have the same set of ordinances? That's just me.
I'd like to move the item.
Recommended action?
Second.
I'd just like to accept it as it is. I agree with Deborah that we're probably not going to use it.
Right.
But who cares? It's there, and if somebody does build something and it's needed, it's there. The fire departments have it, the regs are consistent, and I don't really see a downside, but we all know what's going on.
I think it's lazy legislation. That is lazy legislation.
Jared?
Public hearing.
Well, I already asked.
Did we open it?
Yeah, yeah, we did. No one came up.
No one cares.
We're done. We're moving to do it.
Who's the second, just for the record?
Greg.
Okay, now bear with me here. As it is the first reading, I have to read the title of the ordinance. So the motion on the table is to introduce for first reading ordinance number 2013-582, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City Villa Park, Mending Chapters 9 and 11 of the Villa Park Municipal Code, Adopting by Reference the California Code of Regulations Title 24, Parts 1 through 12, Known and Designated as 2013 Addition of the California Building Code, 2013 Addition of the California Residential Code, 2013 Addition of the California Electrical Code, 2013 Addition of the California Plumbing Code, 2013 Addition of the California Mechanical Code, 2013 Addition of the California Administrative Code, 2013 Addition of the California Reference Standards Code, 2013 Addition of the California Energy Code, 2013 Addition of the California Green Building Standards Code, 2013 Addition of the California Historical Building Code, 2013 Addition of the California Existing Building Code, and the 2013 Addition of the California Fire Code, Making Amendments thereto and related action. Also adopts ordinance 2013-32538, Setting forth Findings with Respect to Local Conditions within the City Villa Park, Which Makes Certain Modifications and Changes to the California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Plumbing Code, California Mechanical Code, California Electrical Code, California Green Building Standards Code, and the California Fire Code, and Fire Standards Reasonably Necessary for Different Occupancies. And for Measure Good Faith, Instruct the Building Official to File the Resolution with the California Building Standards Commission, and a copy to the California Department of Housing and Community Development." Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauley?
This is what's wrong with government, but yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes.
Oh, that's my.
I'll have to say, we have an awful lot of agencies involved there, too.
We have a bunch of them.
Well, my favorite is the green standards. I'm thrilled to death that we are adopting those.
Good. All right, next, our third and final hearing is to consider the draft housing element. Jennifer, do you have a report, please?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight before you is our draft of the latest version of our housing element update. The fifth cycle of the housing element update was due to the State Housing and Community Development Department on October 15th. We have submitted our draft on time and on schedule to the state for their review. This is the first step in this next part of the process for the city. As you're very well aware, the city's gone through a long process to review the general plan, which the housing element is one component of the general plan. That was done through several town hall meetings, through a community advisory committee, and through several public hearings with the city council. The general plan was adopted previously, and the housing element was updated at that time. However, the housing element goes through a state certification process, and the city had some issues that we had to modify our housing element to meet the state requirements. So for the last about 18 months, I've been bringing ordinances to you for review in front of our community for their evaluation as well, that meet the state standards. So we are very confident that we're now in a position to have our fifth cycle of the housing element adopt or certify by the state, so that we will be able to adopt that on time. Our deadline to adopt the final element is February of 2014. So we are well on schedule. So this first step tonight will be to review the draft and to allow the public to have an opportunity to ask questions. Once we receive our responses back from HCD, we'll be holding a couple of community meetings and actually ask the advisory committee also to review the final draft before bringing it back for the council to review again. We anticipate that happening, hopefully, by the end of the year, but not having those community meetings until January so that we avoid the holiday season. That seems the most respectful of our community. And then back to the council before the final deadline in February. I believe that we've talked quite a lot about the ordinances and the different ways that we have worked to meet the state standards. However, tonight, if you have any questions at all, I'm happy to answer them, and certainly if the public has any questions, I'm here for that review as well. With that, we're presenting the draft to you and just asking that you open the public hearing and entertain any questions this evening, and then we'll take those next steps as I've described.
Thank you, Jennifer. Counsel, any questions of Jennifer? Yes, Jennifer, I believe the timing is opposed to the report that was in the newspaper. Is that correct? Because there was a grave error in the reporting by the reporter.
Yes, and I cannot speak to the reporter's decision to print our not meeting the deadline, but I'm certain that it was just a misunderstanding. And in fact, I would like to confirm for the council once again that we did meet the October 15th deadline. Actually, we were ahead of the deadline with HCD, so we are well in their queue and on target. And although we're holding a public meeting tonight on the draft, after that October deadline, that's perfectly within the appropriate timeframe as well.
Good question, Greg. Any other questions before I open the public up?
I just have two. I just want to understand, all of that work that we did to update our general plan leading up to 2010, everything else had been adopted, but they kicked back the housing element, and it had never been approved.
So the state's job is to review it and to certify it, to say that we've met the standards. And we have to meet the standards in terms of our housing assessment, and then in terms of policies that the state believes that cities should adopt. We were okay in terms of our housing numbers. Where we weren't okay were with our policies. And so we weren't certified, but we were kind of in a grace period, where the fourth cycle was ending and the fifth cycle was starting. And so we went ahead and we rolled all of that work into the fifth cycle. So the document that you see in front of you tonight essentially has all of the work that the community did intact, but we had to change some of the ordinances in order to meet the emergency sheltering, transitional housing, how we deal with some of our ordinances, and those have all come through the review of the public process through the city council's work as well.
Basically, the state dictating to us that we will provide for certain things that may or may not actually be keeping with the general character of our community, whether we like it or not.
That is correct. However, it's important to note that that is by ordinance. So whether or not somebody comes into our community and actually wants to construct or build any of those things is a totally different question.
Homeless shelters, apartments for low-income housing, and those kinds of things. You have been very creative in how you've put some of those together. I do appreciate that. My question has to do with when we started this process. We had a community advisory committee that was formed. Brad will remember that. Each council member selected, I think we all did a great job, of selecting someone that is longstanding in the community with a varied talent base, that worked diligently to go through the entire general plan. Has anyone, the chair or any member of that CAC, had an opportunity to review this proposed amendment? Because they're the ones who are, quite frankly, the most familiar with the entire process. Have any of them looked at that? Have they even been asked to look at? They're great community volunteers, so I'm wondering.
So at this time, because we've not changed any of the structural content that they had already provided all of their oversight and review of, we've not asked them back, because we didn't want to take up their time unnecessarily. Once we receive the word back from HCD that we've met the criteria, that we don't have to make any substantive changes, then we do want to invite the CAC to come back and review the document once again, to make sure they're comfortable that we've kept their original intent, although meeting the state's requirements as well. And then with their recommendation and consent, we'll bring that forward to the council.
That's good. I'm glad I did not see in here, or read in here, that they were going to be part of that process, and I really think they should be. My other question that confuses me somewhat has to do under, it's in the beginning in the introduction, where it talks about the authority for the housing element, and it's got a timeline of things. The housing element has been required as part of the general plans of cities since 1967, and then in 1977, the Department of Housing and Community Development published housing element guidelines. So then they established this thing, then they started giving us our guidelines, providing detailed content for what was required of cities, whether we liked it or not. But then in 1981, Article 10.6 of the Government Code was enacted, revising the HCD's role from review and approval to that of review and comment on local housing elements. So I'm a little confused, because it sounds to me like they're still reviewing and approving. They can comment back, but what authority do they still have given this amendment to tell us yes, no, hey, yay, whatever, to approve our housing element, the way we in the city of Villa Park would like to have some local control?
I'm actually going to answer.
Okay.
The commenting period, ultimately, it's with the city to approve a housing element. In the event the city doesn't approve a housing element, there are repercussions that run to the city. So as opposed to HCD giving the thumbs up and saying, "This is now your housing element," the city has to do that, and in the event you choose not to do that, you have to sort of face the consequences. The consequences are effectively, you can't authorize discretionary land use approvals. So like, generally, it refers to developments, but other things that come along with it. And in the event the city is sued or related to those, the city is now responsible for attorney's fees. So there are like hefty penalties. So they've put the burden on to the city to make the ultimate decision, but with those penalties in mind.
So they really aren't giving you any local control to determine your destiny, and they're going to punish you if you're not obedient to their dictates from the state. That's what it sounds like.
However, where, again, we have been creative, I'll use short words, in how we've addressed the requirements is in maintaining our character and our quality of our community. And so rather than simply creating zones that would also meet the state mandate, but would really create the potential for a major shift in our community, instead, we look for things that we already have. Second dwelling units, RPC zone that does allow for more density in our community, although density is a relative term here in Villa Park, but nonetheless meets the state mandate. And so it allows us to meet the requirements without giving up our local control or our local community character. And so it's a little bit of a workaround or work through the system. Where we can't get around the system is where we do have to meet the requirements for emergency shelter, transitional housing, and things of that nature. And so we have absolutely played by the rules, and while they no longer have approval authority, the certification process is to make sure that we're playing by the rules, that we are carrying our fair share and playing along with the other communities in our region.
I appreciate that, Jennifer, and I do appreciate the way you've gone about it. But nonetheless, no matter how you want to play semantic games, not you, this is still things being imposed on us, and fairly recently, because they were not on the books before, and it's very disturbing, because it doesn't meet with the character of our community, and it doesn't even take the fact that we're 99.9% built out into account. So it does bother me, but I think you've done a fairly good job of figuring out how to get us through this without damaging us too much.
I agree. You have, Jennifer. Thank you.
Well, you know, Deanna and I have the opportunity to work with Jennifer and everybody on the CDC a lot, and the way it's approached is totally above board with the state, and this for it keeps everything copacetic, which is the way we want it. So that's the main thing. Thank you very much. You've done a fantastic job, and we like it that way. So thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
Any comments, Deanna, on that, or no? Okay, all right, I'm going to open it up to the public. If anyone would like to speak on this item, you're welcome to come up to the podium, please. I thought we had a taker, but exit stage left. Bye, Carol. All right.
She took you.
See, yeah, there you go. Kind of boring stuff. Seeing no speakers, I'll bring it back to council for comments and/or a motion, please.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Jared?
And our motion is? And our motion is...
There's actually no action.
Yeah, I'm really being confused now, because I didn't think that we were taking an action tonight. But what you're going to do is send this up for their, oh, it's already been sent up, actually, prior to us. And you're waiting for their words to get back to us, and then, once you insert that and additional changes, then you are going to get copies to the, you'll get copies to the CAC, the original members, and I believe they're all still in the community, and give them an opportunity to...
I don't know who they are. I don't think we've ever been notified who they are, who this group of people is.
Okay. We'll make sure that that gets to the council as a whole. And what we would do is we would host that meeting along with our CDC, so that that way, it also opens it up to our council's committee. And we'll, of course, open that up to the public at large. So, anybody who would like to participate and learn more about the housing element in detail, because it is really exciting stuff, will be welcome to come and walk through. And we will probably, and I'll talk with our city manager about this, but we will probably host more than one meeting, just to allow people, if you can't come to a daytime meeting, maybe we'd have a late afternoon or something to accommodate people's schedules.
Jennifer, you never worked with the CAC at all, but they're a really good group, and I would think that it would be, out of respect for the hours and hours that they spent, I mean, they were months, I don't know how long, Jared, I can't even remember, to get copies to them first and allow them to convene themselves first to go through this, before you poll in other groups?
You mean, prior to, well, she's brought this to the CDC before it came to us?
That's fine. But I'm just saying, they did all the original work on the general plan. They're people you would know.
Sure.
Actually, just so they have plenty of time to review and maybe even pull out their old notes, I'd be happy to connect with them before we even get comments back from HCD. And that'll get them some lead time to walk through, and then I can meet with them as a group or individually to answer any questions they may have.
So, you distribute to them and then copy us? That'd be perfect. Great.
So, Jared, do we need to vote on this, then?
No.
Okay. All right. Next, we move to our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or public may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you'd like to have removed from the consent calendar?
Four, please.
Item four, okay. Any others? Okay, so, item four is polled by Deborah. So, can I get a motion on five through eight, please?
I'll move the balance.
Rick, second?
Yep.
Okay, Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fessinelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barnett?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes, thank you so much. Item four.
Item four is the list of warrants, and those are the bills that we pay out as a city. I've gone over these things with Jared, but I would like to go over them for the benefit of the public. On page one, Jared, we had talked about B&amp;J Tree Service doing storm drain cleaning, and I wondered what else they were doing for $10,500.
This expenditure is for the storm drain cleaning upon Canyon Circle, which extends to Mesa Drive. It's probably 300-foot stretch of open drainage channel that, by the state of California, we're required to maintain at least once a year. So, B&amp;J Tree Service, we've gone out to bid over the last couple of years for it, and they are always a little bitter for this one.
And the reason I brought it forward is because, and I'm sure all the other council members received the email from a resident on Via Bravo about tree maintenance, and I thought, okay, we've got tree people cleaning storm drains. What's going on with the trees on Via Bravo? And for the benefit of those residents, I wanted Jared to help explain exactly what had happened there.
Absolutely. We have some median-lined streets here in the city: Via Bravo, Verde Lomo, Slidewood, Bryley, which, as part of our landscape maintenance contract, the vendor is required to maintain twice annually. Typically, that's done in the summer and then before Christmas, so everything's looking nice before the holidays. This year, through the transition of our landscape maintenance contractor, it was on schedule to be trimmed from our prior contractor, but through the transition, it was never done, and then the new contractor took effect, and he's set to get to it in the next couple of weeks.
Did the old contractor get paid in full?
He got paid in full.
But it was clearly his last swoop.
Yeah. And you know what's funny? Is it happened the same way three years ago.
Yeah. So, it was a swipe, but the residents definitely noticed it.
Absolutely.
It's going to be taken care of promptly, and I just wanted that explanation to be made clear. It was no fault of the city's. That's good. And then, I wanted to talk about item 1288, which is the Park Larson Gate Repair. That's private enterprise that's happened down there, where the community down there at Larson wants to have their own gated area. And my question was whether or not we are paying for it in $18 for their repair. Are we being reimbursed for that?
Yes, you are. So, we pay for any expenditures throughout the year with regards to repair or maintenance of the gates, as well as the insurance for it. And then, at the end of every year, we'll add everything up and divide it evenly amongst all the homeowners. And we do add administrative charge for that one. So, we are reimbursed at the end of every year for that.
Fully for the work. Thank you. And that was the big issue, was the administrative cost, because we are administering that, but our staff collects that and covers that cost. Next page, I was very confused to see two voided checks to Empire Media Productions, and then, the very next page, a check cut for $1,200. So, I was wondering what happened there.
Yeah, a couple of the monthly checks were lost in the mail and in transition. So, that was the July and August meeting, the two $400 checks were lost. So, we voided those out, and then we paid it at the same time of the September's meeting. So, three meetings, $10,400 was the $1,200 reimbursement. Michelle, did you verify that the checks were never cashed and just missing an action?
That was actually my biggest issue. You know, how do you know they got lost in the mail? Oh, yeah, it's got lost in the mail. Okay, very good. And, yes, Michelle?
We also do stop payments on it, so.
You do, you stop payments, yes. And now, you're hand-delivering them when he comes in?
Well, what happened is he moved.
Oh.
And they got lost. They never got to his post office.
Or some 16-year-old a bicycle decided to raid his mailbox.
Thankfully, they're not smart enough to cash it, so we're still good.
Very good. Thank you. What I do appreciate is that when I call and ask questions like this, because I go over the entire agenda with Jared, he always has the answer, and if he doesn't, he gets right back to me. So, I really, part of this is just to point out what a well-oiled machine we have right now, and the great communication that staff has amongst themselves. So, I appreciate that. I'm happy to move the item unless anyone else has questions.
I'll second.
I think it's unfortunate, frankly, that staff has to go through this and spend the time as much as they do, because I don't worry do about it. But when I go through, I ask the same thing. When I've signed the checks, I went through, and they made him explain it to me, then you made him explain it to you, and then they explain it again at the meeting. So, I'm not sure. It might be a way to streamline that, but I'll second.
Since you brought that up, Mayor Protem Barnett, I will mention, Deborah, I mean, usually, these questions are asked to the city manager or to Michelle prior to the meeting, because we get our book early. So, I got to ask, you know, is it necessary to bring them up in public so that we can sit and talk about something you've already got answers for?
I think it's a...
I wasn't going to say it, but since you mentioned it, I will say that.
Well, this is what I'm not going to do to our city manager. I'm not going to broadside him with questions, but sometimes...
Broadside?
If I'm asking him questions from the dais without having had an opportunity to ensure that he knows what's going on, unless it's a last-minute thing, I'm certainly not going to do that. But there are members of our community who actually pay attention to these council meetings and actually have their own questions, and sometimes, it's for the benefit of the community. But I will add this. You will allow Mayor Protem Barnett to, you know, pontificate for 10 minutes, repeating himself over and over again, and never once do you slap him down to be quiet. I have the right and authority, as an elected member of this council, to ask questions during the council meeting, whether you like it or not.
All right. It's just my opinion, but if you ask Jared...
I keep my questions to a minimum.
Okay. If you get your answers satisfied by Jared prior to the meeting, why bring them up in the meeting?
What is the harm, what is the harm of giving them a positive reinforcement for the work that they do in a public way? I think it's appropriate. We have a fairly new city manager, and I think that it gives the community confidence to know that he's on top of things.
All right. Rick, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to respond to the, with all due respect...
There is no due respect to happen in here. Don't try to fake it.
I would be happy to take a look at the time we expended in discussion tonight, okay? I made a few comments about the fireworks, and I don't know how long I sat here, but to tell me that I ate up time after the time you...
I'm not even talking about that. I'm talking about last, you know, last month, pulling the minutes for an update. I have my weekly meeting with our city manager. So far, this council meeting has only gone on for an hour and 34 minutes. And if we can stop with this nitpicking, we can move this item and move on.
All right. Let's move on. All right. So, I believe we were at a motion and second on item four. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Motion is to approve the total warrants and disbursements. Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fessinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, item nine is old business. This is a matter continued from our last meeting to consider a request for the closure of the block wall along Fitchin Ranch Road. Jared, do you have a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this item was continued from our last meeting when the city council directed staff to survey the neighborhood. A public notice and survey was mailed to 94 residences in proximity to the closures, and then, at the time of the writing, 27 surveys have been returned. I just received one earlier tonight, who was opposed to all the closures. The results to the question, the question was, "Do you support closing one or more of the sections of the block wall with wrought iron fencing?" are as follows. The south entrance, Fitchin and Collins, 16 were in support of closing that, and 12 were in opposition to it. The midsection closer at Beckley, 19 were in support, and eight were in opposition, or, yeah, in opposition to closing it, and one had no opinion. And the same goes for Aberdeen. 19 support, eight oppose, one no opinion. The matter was discussed at the Community Development Committee meeting on October 19th. At that time, the committee recommended that the sections of the wall be closed for a 60-day review period, using temporary barriers, temporary barriers such as box trees and chain link fencing, similar to what we had around City Hall during the facade project. Following that meeting, I received a petition from a resident in the area, which contained 34 signatures. That petition was included in your agenda packet. For the privacy of the individuals, because it had signatures, I didn't include it to the online packets. Out of that petition, 34 signatures, eight of which were already submitted in response to the notices that I mailed out. So, at this time, I recommend that the city council discuss and provide direction to staff.
Yes, I'd like to know the difference between the signatures that were gathered versus the ones that were returned to you.
34 were gathered, and then eight of the...
That was done by person, by an individual, is that correct?
Yes. Yes. And then, eight of those signatures had already been returned to me.
They were repetitious. Okay. Well, is that normal procedure to be able to do that either form?
The petition?
Yeah, they can go with the petition and do the same thing, or we want a response back from the resident?
Typically, we've seen it handled that way.
So, okay, it's a mixed bag on that one. All right.
All right. Well, we met with the CDC. We did not see these signatures during our meeting, so we didn't know anything about that. We collectively haven't changed our mind about having, collectively, the CDC has not changed its mind about having the walls closed up. But what we thought would be a compromise to see whether or not it would be something we want is to actually not close the bus stop, the Collins side, where the bus stop is, but to close the wall along Wanda temporarily for 60 days, have everybody do their jogging, do their walking, come back, do a survey to the residents, see if the safety issue has been taken care of, because that seemed to be the number-one issue. People were talking the crime was up because those two openings were there. So, if we could put some chain link fencing there with the boxwoods, no one can get over it. And let's see what happens in the next two months. And if that's the case, then we spend the $4,000 and put the wrought iron...
And then see if they really like it, because at a certain point, why put, you know, wrought iron up? Just go ahead and put more bricks up. I mean...
I sat there and observed walkers today. I mean, there were people walking with their strollers that don't live in the area, and it's used. People do go in and out. The schoolchildren go in and out also. From the presidential streets, they do come in. But for two months, let's block it off and see what happens.
Give it a 60-day period. That's our recommendation. Of course, the council can override that and get it done permanently.
Which ones are you proposing? Block all three?
Not all three. Not the one by the bus stop, which is on the corner of Collins and Collins and...
I think it's just two.
Because the bus stop, that's a public bus stop. We have people who go to work in the city. They take the bus there. They walk into the city and...
Plus, it's also direct access to the bike trail.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a bike trail that goes through there that the city uses, so we don't, we don't recommend...
So, the proposals for two of them, right?
It's for the wall, only the wall that's along Wanda.
Right.
Yes.
Is there two openings?
There's two openings.
Just two openings, okay.
I thought the biggest concern was that people coming across Collins and coming into there and parking and walking through.
We took the parking away, though. You can't park in overnight anymore there.
That's right.
The signs are not, are the signs up yet? I do not believe they are.
Not yet.
We passed it, but it hasn't been enforced.
They weren't up yet.
Once again, enforcement issues. It doesn't matter.
The signs were unordered, and part of that was delayed due to the sewer project, which was extended, because that's where our contractor was staging their equipment.
Yes.
Also, they get up, along with the signs on Fernando.
That bike trail that's there is utilized by walkers, I mean, by our own citizens, again, with the bus stop, again, with the children. You have to understand, you know, the majority of kids who go to Villa Park Elementary are coming from that street. They do walk. They do ride their bikes. So, you know, to close that up...
What's it going to cost us to effectively wall it up temporarily?
Oh, we have the fencing.
We have the material. We have chain link. We have box plants. But I think the box plants are actually too heavy to move, so we'll have to construct some new ones, maybe $1,000, maybe, at the high end. I mean, that's a conservative estimate.
Then, if we want to do it permanent, we have to take that stuff out and then put the other, and then put the other in. I mean, I think it's interesting concept. I kind of like it on the one hand. On the other, I'm looking at it, and on those two openings, it's 19 to seven. It's almost three to one.
Now, remember, this came from two complaints.
That's right.
Okay, we've had almost five meetings now from two complaints.
Right, but look at the vote.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm just looking at the vote.
Okay, we sent out 94, and we got 27 responses.
And then, you have some, then you had someone walking around to talk to their residents, and the residents talk to each other, and then they usually take a spokesperson. And normally, what happens is people wait until they have an issue before they come, and they quietly ask for help. There was an email, and then, that was ignored. And then, there was another couple of emails, and those were ignored. Then, you actually had one of the shyest people I know in the community come to us, okay? And then, we agreed to at least, okay, let's go ahead and throw out and do a survey. To get more than 5% or 6% back on a survey is phenomenal in any city, but for us, we send surveys out historically. And I always find out, what is our percentage return? 5%, 6%? And I'm always disappointed. It's like we were trying to get feedback. But just on those that were returned of their own free volition, you're looking at a 30% return on survey, and you've got a two to one that actually want it, and then someone else that took the initiative to go and talk to their neighbors. I know a lot of these people on this petition here, and I can tell you, if they didn't want it, they wouldn't have signed it, because they're not the kind that would just easily fall to this. Here's the deal. That anyone would go door-to-door to talk to their neighbors about an issue, I think, is a great community and civic effort. And certainly, they have a right to petition their council. We're talking about spending a lousy $4,000 for people who have lived in this community for a long time. They spend a lot of money in taxes. They hardly ask for anything down there. They're concerned about their safety. They're feeling unsure of themselves. It's our job as a council to listen to those pleas from the community, and if it is within reason for us to deliver that good to them within a budget that we have available to us, then we should do it. And surely, clearly, this is within reason. And I also think it's just a waste of time to do a test period, especially when it's going to be an eyesore, and then we're going to come back and go around, around, and around. If we had, if we wait long enough, we will have this whole room filled with that entire group down there mad as hell. Do we want to go that far? I don't. Let's just take care of it. They hardly ever ask for anything.
We had two people complain, Deborah.
Okay, well, I see a lot more than two people that agree.
Just go ahead and just vote on this.
All right, I'm done.
Let's go. We're going to open this up to the public. I'd like to hear from some of you folks to come up and tell us what you think about this.
Yeah, I want to make it clear, this isn't a month, from my perspective, I don't want to mischaracterize. It's not the $4,000. To me, the $4,000 in this regard is inconsequential. The issue is, what does the community want? It looks like they want this thing closed, to me, but I got the CDC here telling me that they've been involved in it hand, you know, face-to-face, and they're apprehensive that this is really the desire. So, that's what's causing me the issue, not the money.
Yeah. Let's hear from the residents and see what they say.
Thank you. My name's Greg Masters. I live on Beckley Circle, 17861. So, I first heard about this, I was out of town, actually, and... So I first heard about this, I was out of town, actually, and I didn't get a chance to respond, but I have been involved in it with my wife. And of course, having lived on the, in the area, I know what the foot traffic's like. And the first thing I want to say is, just closing the two on Wanda is not going to solve any problem.
Zero.
Zero problem. And in fact, putting up no parking signs is actually making the situation worse for us who live in cul-de-sacs. Now, if you block it off there in Collins, you're not going to have the issue with, with any of those people parking in that area. And it gives us a chance to have some overflow on a, on a cul-de-sac where we might want to park overnight. And so I just think, you guys are just solving the wrong problem. If you just come in and talk to the people who live there, the issue is people walking along Fitchin Ranch, coming from Collins, cutting, cutting through that area. Then I would be really shocked to know that there are a lot of people commuting with buses from residents in that area. I could be wrong, but I would be very shocked. Most of the people that we see that go to the bus stop there near Beckley Circle on Wanda, are, they, they either end up cutting through just because it's nicer to walk that way, or, or they walk on the other side. They're, they're not coming from our, from our part of the community. So I'm not bothered by a test, okay? And you talk about, Mayor Pro Tem, I think it was you that talked about eyesores. Hey, we lived on Fitchin Ranch with that eyesore of that construction project for I don't know how many months, and, you know, I guess we're used to eyesores. So I have no problem with a temporary thing. There may be others that would just like it be permanent, and I understand that. But to only do the two on Wanda is a huge mistake. It's not a test, right? It won't solve any of the problems. So if you're going to do a test, let's close off all three and do the test, and then let's find out. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
My name's Eric Reynolds. I'm the one that walked around to the houses. If I didn't have to work, I would have probably got to all the houses. I only went to about forty of the houses. And obviously, I think there was thirty-six people that, out of the thirty-six, only four people didn't want it closed off. Most of the people I talked to, like myself, did not get that survey in the mail, not because I think it's quite possible that we threw it out. There was a lot of people that did not get it, or threw it out, or did not answer it because they didn't think it mattered. Everything he said is absolutely true. The parking thing, it won't exist if there's, if the gates are closed, because everybody parking there is coming from the apartments, which I see all the time, and they're coming from the houses on the other side. One of the real big things is, if you neglect to close the Collins and Wanda, I think you guys are calling it Fitchin and Collins, or whatever it is, then it's, it's pointless. It's, you might as well not do it.
So you want all three closed?
You know, I'm not a, I'm neither here nor there on closing all three. Everybody wanted all three closed. I mean, every single person I talked to but, but two people who wanted both ends closed and leave the middle open, because that's where the bus stop is, actually. They kind of wanted it so they can walk and do whatever they want. There was four people, I think there was four people that I talked to, out of the only maybe thirty-six, thirty-eight, I couldn't get everywhere, there was ninety-five homes affected, I couldn't get everywhere. I had some neighbors helping do a couple other ones, so I didn't talk to maybe eight, eight people. Out of the, out of the four that I talked to, one said that she doesn't want Villa Park to seem eccentric and that we're trying to close off Orange, so I didn't really take that too highly. The other one, two people said, because they wanted to walk, well, I don't see it a big deal, walk down to Lincoln and walk down to the bike trail, ride your bike, there's a sidewalk there. On the other side of this, this wall, we have a fairly large sidewalk. I don't know the point, you know, why we need to, why they have to actually go on the Wanda side, because everybody using that is using it from coming to apartments, coming from those residents to walk down, to walk down Fitchin Ranch. And then the last one was, oh, they had friends that were actually living in apartments that were using it to go. So that was the four. So if I would have got to the additional, maybe fifty houses or so, I would assume the numbers would be the same, because the numbers are overwhelmingly to close it. And that is closing Fitchin and Collins. And by the way, the crime is happening there because, I have some notes, sorry. Obviously, the graffiti's there. I don't think anybody who lives in Villa Park on those streets, graffiti's the walls there. I don't think they break the sprinklers, I don't think they're drinking in that park, I don't think they're letting their dogs walk and pooing all over the place and not picking it up. If you live in Villa Park, you're going to pick it up. The parking's already been addressed, and then, you know, I've been out there where someone was, a couple people were drinking, they got in a fight with a crowbar. Also was there, I live right there on Helena, I was also there when a car just, they got all drunk and did donuts in the circle and then ran into the tree. You know, Orange PD showed up and they said, "That's the county," so they left. I mean, that's about all I have for, for that. But I do, I do want to make sure that you do realize that if Collins and Wa, if, if Collins and Fitchin doesn't get closed, it does no good at all. And it does no good to try, do a trial either. Everybody down there wants it to be closed off. And if you want, go to the other fifty houses. That's it.
Thank you, Eric. I'm very concerned about the fact that we didn't hear about this crime.
Yeah.
This is the first time we've heard about all these extra crimes, crowbars, people drinking in the park there. Something's really wrong here. And why didn't Orange PD call the chef? That's another issue.
I sat out there and watched it all happen.
Well, you're a policeman, I mean, how, how does it happen?
I have no clue.
Okay. That's, that's the most disturbing thing I just heard, that all this, this stuff's going on. And does that mean the residents are not reporting it at all?
Yes, they are.
They are reporting it?
They are not.
They're not?
They're not.
Or they're, they're so used to it? Is that what you're-
You know, to be honest with you, I don't, it's not, you know, drinking down there, I've only caught it two or three times that I've seen it. And, you know, I come home at odd hours and, and, you know, I kind of watch out for it.
Sure.
And, I mean, it's going on. I know that, I've talked to the maintenance guys, they got to fix stuff down there, they got to fix things that are broken, and you constantly have people walking down there.
Jared?
Jared?
Do we have, it might come back to you with anything that you've seen?
Mike Oles?
If sprinklers are broken, I'm told it's because our landscape contractors, and they run over them with a mower. This is the first time I'm hearing of a crowbar incident, not to say it didn't happen, I just definitely-
There's lots of things that we don't know happened.
Made aware of that. Kids drink, I get it, you find beer cans, no problem. There's been reports from Mike and Rich of illegal dumping of newspapers in the trash containers down there, because folks in Orange are too cheap to pay for trash service, so they come dumping our trash cans.
And then we have to pay for it.
And then, yeah, Mike and Rich go out there and empty the trash cans.
It's public.
But before, can we go back up, just for the benefit of the public, folks on camera?
Just, just on the dumping thing, I mean, there's been two times where trucks just dumped an entire load. And the reason is, is because that wall hides you from anything. Any cops driving down, Orange PD, Orange County Sheriff's Department, any of them, from driving down that street on Wanda, you can't see on the other side of the wall. That's what they're using it for. They're using it to not, so you're not able to see what's going on. I don't know if any of you live down in that area or not, but people who live in that area know this is going on. They all, they overwhelmingly want it closed. I did not talk to anybody. There was a couple people, and I said, "Well, have you ever thought about this?" And they went, "Oh, yeah, that's right." Yeah, close that thing. I mean, yeah, I believe it's a benefit to close it, so obviously, when I talk to everybody, you know, there, you know, if anyone was a little bit wavering on it, which, there was only two or three, then I said, and then I would just, I would, I would throw things out at them, like, "Hey, did you see this guy walking down here? Did you see this guy? There's a homeless guy that come, constantly coming down there." If you give, if people are going to be hidden by the street, by a wall, and the cops aren't, the cops don't drive down Fitchin Ranch that often, but they're always driving down Wanda, so if you're going to walk through there, they can easily walk through there and go, "Hey, guess what? Hey, that's over there, that's over there. I'm going to grab it and I'm going to run through that little hole in the wall, and then I'm out." I mean, it's, it's just a simple, simple solution, and it's overwhelming. If there's only a hundred people affected, those hundred people should be listened to. It shouldn't matter what goes on in the city and they want to go on a bike trail. If you're going on a bike trail and you're exercising, you can go down to the, you can go down to Center Street and go. I mean, you're exercising, you don't need to go through there.
Really?
Yeah.
I think we have a discussion when we sit up here about the city as a whole first. We have to look at the city of Villa Park and how all the residents drive through it, walk through it. Transportation is an issue. We want to get people on their bikes, we want to get people walking. So I understand what you're saying, but understand that when we look at gates and closures and stuff, we look at the city as a whole, because these hundred people don't own these streets. They don't, just like I don't own my street. So we just want to look at the community as a whole. I don't have the right answer right now, that's why we're listening to everybody, but let's make sure that we understand that that bike trail was opened up. And if you have a choice of the school-aged kids riding their bike, do you want them on Wanda sidewalk, which you're not legally supposed to ride on the sidewalk? So they'd have to be on the street on Wanda or on Fitchin Ranch Road.
But, but I don't, first of all, to get back to the part where it's a whole city, I completely understand the whole city, but there's a hundred people that it affects. It doesn't affect, when someone rides their bike, if they're not included in that hundred, they're riding it from either end, and they can just continue riding. They don't, they're not needed to ride on the other side of the street. And when you say you're looking at it for a whole city, that's, that's just literally not fair for this scenario. This scenario only deals with those hundred houses right there. I mean, if you're coming from somewhere else in the city, if you're coming from here, you can just ride down Wanda and keep going, and go straight into the bike trail. But what's the point in going back in onto Fitchin, Fitchin, and coming back out onto Collins? What would be the point in that?
Because it's prettier, and I don't have the smog from, from the, from the exhaust from the cars.
Well-
And that's why people who push their strollers do it on that side also, they feel safer, so.
And so do the people that are doing stuff that's not right. They feel safer, because they're not being seen.
Thank you.
Point well taken.
Very much so.
All right, thank you, Eric. Looks like we have another speaker.
Nicole, can I, can I just ask you a question real quick? Are you in favor of closing them?
If the residents are in favor of closing them, I'm in favor of closing them.
Okay, because here, I was going to make a motion on this, and I just-
We have to close public hearing, we have to allow for public hearing. That's a legal requirement.
I understand, and that's why I was going to shut her down. I just wanted to let her know what I was going to do, so she could maybe save some time if she's going to support it. I was going to make a motion to close all three of these and to defer the no parking decision that we made previously, so we can revisit that in light of the closures. That was the motion I was going to make, so if that affects whether or not you want to speak on it, go ahead, but if you're, you're certainly entitled to speak.
I just wanted to make a quick comment, just as the public at large and someone who uses the bike trail, it's, I've never felt the need to ride through Fitchin Ranch at all. You know, we've always ridden around, you know, my family, my husband, my kids, you know, we've never felt the need to go through their community. So, it's just as someone who doesn't live in the area, I want to give that perspective.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you. All right, anyone else to come speak to it? Okay, we'll close that part and bring it back to council for discussion.
I agree with what Mr. Barnett said. Let's take care of our community, they're asking for something that's totally within our ability to provide to them.
So is that a motion or a second? Jared, do we have a cost for all three, or just the two?
You know, the original estimate that I had expired after thirty, sixty days, so I'd have to go back and get some more.
Roughly another two K, probably?
It depends. Do we want, and to clarify the motion, do you want an access gate or no access gate?
Well, I think the gate's foolish. If you're going to close them, you close them.
Close them off.
We'll close them, I think we can-
Let's double your budget.
No access gate, much cheaper, and I think we could do that with $4,000.
Riot iron, it'll look nice, and it actually matches what happens at the end.
Yeah. Eric, I'm assuming no gate, obviously. Closing is closing, right?
To me, it doesn't matter as long as it's closed and the people that are going to do the right thing.
Yeah, but if you're going to put a gate and lock it, that's what good's at. I mean, anyways, yeah. Okay, any other comments or motions or thoughts?
Are you going to make your motion? Because I will second that motion.
I'll make the motion, and I would like to couple with that, that we, I don't know whether to make it separately or not, but as I recall, didn't we already approve some no parking down there, and you're going to put signs up?
Yes.
So I think what we should do is, we're going to gate it.
I agree.
At the very least, we should defer and bring that, probably has to come back on calendar, I probably can't act on it now, I suspect, because it hasn't been notified for this hearing. So I would suggest that we, that we put these gates in, we'll do the motion to put these gates in, but I would also like to bring that other item on the parking back on calendar, and let's consider tabling that and not spend the money messing up the park, prohibiting the parking, if we're going to gate it off, just so that we cause inconvenience to the people that live there. Let's let them have their parking at that point.
I would agree with that, too. We did, but, but he was on the prevailing side, and he can bring it back, right?
Any city council-
Did we already buy the signs, Jared?
The signs have been ordered, yes.
Can you cancel the order?
Can we bail out of that?
We can't return them, they're a hundred and thirty dollars a piece.
I think we'll use them somewhere else anyway.
Are they uni, are they universal?
We'll use them somewhere else.
Basically, or- Are they custom for that area?
They actually are, they are custom for the area, depending on the hours that you're prohibiting the parking and the municipal cut section that you cite. But it's, you know, maybe a couple hundred dollar loss, no big deal.
But the only reason that we had to do that was because people would park there and then do those cut-throughs and run across Collins, or excuse me, Wanda, in order to go visit who it is they wanted to visit, or where they actually lived. And we've seen that multiple times. I've seen plenty on that street during the day, broad daylight, with young kids that are just abusive to our property. They don't live in the city of Villa Park, and they have no respect for it.
For me, Jared, I, I kind of like the temporary thing, because I'd hate to spend the money to put up this permanent thing and then find out, you know, later, oop, shouldn't have done it, wasted money, go yank them out. However, I changed my mind on that tonight based on everything I heard tonight. I think I would not want to go spend the grand roughly to put up temporaries and then have to go put up the real. So I, myself, I'm, I've heard enough tonight for me just to put up the real ones, call it a day. That's just my own comment.
That's my motion.
That's your motion?
That's my second.
Sounds like a second then.
That's my second. I already seconded.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
No. Let's go. To clarify, would you like me to bring back at the next city council meeting, a resolution removing the parking?
Resending or reviewing it, yes.
Okay. So the motion is to approve the closures, no access gates.
For three of them, not two?
For three of them. We'll need a budget amendment. So to authorize the finance director to amend the budget.
Not to exceed 8,000? Does that sound fair?
Four thousand would be plenty. Not to exceed 4,000. And then at the next city council meeting, we'll bring back a resolution. And in the meantime, I will table erecting the signs.
Now what? Don't, Jared, can't we, don't you think you want to say not to exceed 6,000 at least just in case it's 4,050 and now you've locked yourself in?
Not to exceed 6,000. Is that okay with the maker of the motion?
That's my motion. You want to make it 5,000? I don't care. But.
Let's make it six.
Not to exceed. It's not to exceed. He's not going to spend more than he needs.
That's a six, six hundred.
All right. So the motion, the motion is to close Fitch and Collins, Fitch and Beckley, Fitch and Aberdeen gates, not to exceed $6,000 and to bring back the, the other.
Parking signs. Yes, sir.
Second.
Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Pauli?
Yes.
Councilman Fessenelli?
No.
Councilman Mills?
No.
Mayor Reese?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Item 10 is new business. We're going to consider a matter submitted by the Orange County Fire Authority seeking to address equity issue. Division Chief Concepcion, do you have a report, please?
Here are council members. I've got a PowerPoint show that Mr. Hillbrand is going to put together for your consideration today. I'm bringing forth the Second Amendment to the amended joint powers authority agreement. So this, this whole JPA or this whole amendment or the Second Amendment is really about the equity issue. And what is the equity issue? In the state of California, all homeowners pay, as we all know all too well probably, that we all pay 1% of our property value in taxes. And in return for those property taxes that we pay, we receive a level of services, whether it be fire services, police services, public works, what have you. We receive the same kind of services. What happens is inequities arise or come up when you take those 1% of property taxes and you translate that to dollars. Because, because it's a percentage, the dollars that neighbors may be paying won't be the same thing. So it varies from home to home, neighbor to neighbor, and from city to city. So just to illustrate that, we've got for your consideration here, two houses that are right down the street from each other in the city of Irvine. Both are very similar houses, similar in size, similar in style. One was, is used in the base year of 1975 when the home was purchased. So that homeowner, homeowner has been living there for a very long time. Their assessed value is 99,185. So 1% of their property, 1% property tax that they pay is $992. The amount of money that goes to the structural fire fund or to the OCFA is $120 from that home. In home number two, their base year, they moved in in 2011, their assessed value is roughly 10 times that of their neighbor at $994,000. The 1% of their property tax is about $9,900 and the structural fire fund revenue that goes to the OCFA from that homeowner is about $1,200. That doesn't mean to say that, that the OCFA is going to send any less of a service to, or providing less service to, to that neighbor that provides or that pays less for their, for their property tax. So we've studied this issue of equity for a long time. It first came up in 1995, even, 1994, even before the JPA was formed. And then the last study that we had was at 1999, 2000. It was the Davis Study. And what they figured was the, the fair share that, or the, the share of each of the member cities would be based on three factors. That's on population, on assessed value, and the use or the amount of service that, that the OCFA provides to each of those individual cities. Because of property tax values and what it's done in the city of Irvine, they started raising these concerns again in, to the OCFA board in 2012. And what they were saying is if, if the OCFA board didn't take any action, what they wanted to do, what they intended to do was to withdraw from the OCFA in 2020, which would be the first time that they'd have to declare in 2018 and they would actually withdraw from the OCFA in 2020, which would be their first opportunity according to the current agreement that we have in place. The other thing that Irvine still has, even though this, this Second Amendment is, is before you, they still do have that study underway to assess the feasibility of forming their own independent fire department, how much that would cost and, and how much it would cost to withdraw from, from the OCFA. So what we did as the OCFA in response to that is we established the Equity Committee in March of 2012. That, that consisted, that committee consisted of four board directors from, I believe, two contract cities and two structural fire fund cities, four city managers of the same two contract cities and two structural fire fund cities.
I'm sorry. Were those the same cities?
The only, no, they were from different cities. The only repeat city where they had a city manager as well as a board director was the city of Irvine.
And what other, I'm sorry, what, because that was one of my questions. What other cities were represented?
This is Lori Zeller. She's Assistant Chief of Business Services. So.
The board members were from the city of Dana Point, Mission Viejo, Irvine, and Tustin. And then the city managers were from Irvine, Placentia, Laguna Hills, and Lake Forest. And then the ninth member was a county CEO designee.
Thank you.
So since the formation of that Equity Committee in 2012, they had six formal meetings of that Equity Committee. There were 12 informal meetings, negotiation meetings between the OCFA and the city of Irvine. And between those different, those different informal meetings, there were 17 proposals that were exchanged. As a result of all those negotiations, if you will, the proposed solution came up and it's, it's what we call the Enhanced Hybrid Model. And there's actually three parts to it. The first part is instead of using what I had said before, the original equity used assessed value, population, and use, this new hybrid model uses the equity payments using average structural fire fund tax rate. So the structural fire fund agency is contributing more than the average share of 1% property tax to OCFA. And there are five entities that, that do so according to this new calculation would be eligible for equity payments. The average of that is, if you take the, the weighted average of across, across the board of the structural fire fund cities, that average is 11.57 cents per dollar. So that portion of your 1% property tax that goes towards structural fire fund or fire services is, averages 11.57. The, the equity payments per this calculation may change from year to year depending on any annual growth factors.
That actually, point two is actually per dollar collected on the 1%, correct?
Yeah, it's for, yeah, it's, it's the, yeah.
So it's point one.
And I'm sorry, which five cities is it that are, are now under this new calculation overpaying?
It would be Santa Margarita, San Juan, Capistrano, Laguna Woods, Irvine are the four cities, and then the county of Orange.
Oh.
Did I get that right, Lori?
And the county.
And the county, yes.
That's on the new model.
On the new model.
The old model is?
The old model is those three factors averaged out. If you want more particulars on that old model, I'd have to defer to Lori because she's got the technical.
Those are also called donor cities, right?
What's that?
They're also referred to as donor cities.
Yes. Yeah. On the old model, we were one of them, right?
Exactly.
Yes. Yeah. And that, that's coming up and I'll, I'll show you that. Yeah. So part two of, part two of that Enhanced Hybrid Model, what we did is we considered Irvine a super donor. And what, as a result of them being a super donor, they, we placed a, a three and a half percent cap on the growth as far as future dollars that OCFA will receive from Irvine. That's net of any equity payments that's, that's issued under that part one of the calculation. So anything that, that's, that's over three and a half percent property tax growth, that'll trigger actually additional payments to the city of Irvine. And I'm trying to remember when that part, Lori, can you tell me when that?
2022.
2022 is when that actually comes into play. And as a result of this, as a result of this proposal, Irvine, and part of the agreement is that Irvine is going to commit to remain with the OCFA through 2030 as a result of this. The, the third part is that there is a five-year phase-in for these equity payments for all of the, for four of the entities. That'd be Santa Margarita, San Juan, Capistrano, Laguna Woods, and the county of Orange. The only folks accepted from that is Irvine. Irvine would, would immediately start receiving their equity payments. So what that, what that was the reason that we put in that five-year, that five-year phase-in was to ease the, the impact on OCFA's annual budget. And that's what originally, originally the, the proposal prior to this, Irvine was included in that, in that five-year phase-in. And then this was, this is the one that was approved where Irvine would not have that five-year phase-in. What we did talk about at, at our board meeting was the fact that those, those other cities that would be receiving equity payments and that have that phase-in period, we would give them in-kind services like maybe crew work, dozer work, if it's, if it's, if it becomes necessary. So where's this money coming from? The, the annual equity payments to eligible structural fire fund members will be issued using unrestricted sources of OCFA revenue. That means that we can't, we cannot use structural fire fund money to provide these payments to, to these, to the entities that are eligible for the equity payments or the rebate payments. And you are assured that any structural fire fund members that are considered to be underfunded to this new calculation and any cash contract members shall not be required to pay additional contributions to OCFA as a result of these equity payments. So what does this mean specifically for Villa Park? As you, you had mentioned, Villa Park, I mean, the, under the old calculation, using population, assessed value, and use was slightly overfunded. Last checked with, I checked with Lori, the last numbers were that Villa Park was about $300,000 overfunded according to the last calculation. And these are really hypothetical, hypothetical numbers. And I'll, I'll explain why these are hypothetical numbers. Now, using this new calculation, which is average of the structural fire fund tax rate, which is at 11.57% of that 1% property tax that you pay, Villa Park is underfunded. And reason being is Villa Park has been incorporated for a while. There were more taxing entities when, when this was frozen. But again, this equity, this equity issue, there, there really is, there are hypothetical numbers. And that last bullet there, just to show you the amount of services that, or what it costs OCFA to provide the services in Villa Park, the, the one engine, engine 23, that's in the city, that provides services to the city of Villa Park, including the cost for station maintenance as well as vehicle replacement fund, and then personnel costs to, to staff that fire engine is about $3.4 million a year. And in 1213, the, the structural fire fund revenue from the city of Villa Park was roughly $1.4 million.
Does that $3.4 million include pension obligation? Is that rolled in?
Yes, it does.
Of course it does.
Okay.
The 1.4, how come it's so much different now?
What, what do you mean by it's so much different?
Well, I mean, you're looking at this and it, if we were almost at parity and then all of a sudden now with this new formula, we're basically 50%.
No, that, that, that's not the, with the, with the new formula, Lori, do you know where they are, where they sit as far as actual?
3.4 million.
Yeah. The, the 3.4 million, Councilman Mills, 3.4 million is the cost of service.
I know.
That provides. That's why I said it has really nothing to do with.
So that, that station out there with engine 23, that is just for us alone.
It provides, well.
Because Orange has their own.
Well, Orange has their own, yeah.
We're not going to get into mutual aid stuff, but that's part of the deal.
Yeah.
That's a shared station.
Yeah.
Yeah. But most of the responses actually are coming from Orange Fire. But we don't want to get into those details. This is already funny enough.
Yeah. So.
We've been on the receiving end for a while.
Yeah. But we're not Irvine. So 300,000 is just slightly overfunded.
So, so you asked about the difference under the new formula versus these two old?
Yeah.
And I can, I can sympathize with the confusion. That's the problem we enter when we start talking about equity. Because the only platform really we have for equity under the California property tax system is everybody pays an equal 1% and everybody gets the same level of service. Unfortunately, we were forced into this conversation at repeated intervals in our history, really driven by one of our largest member agencies in terms of property tax dollars that flows to OCFA. We get $180 million in property taxes from 16 member agencies. One third of that comes from one city, city of Irvine. So with this hanging over our head of their very serious concern that they were likely to withdraw, how do we achieve the stability for the overall funding for all of our members? It was we got to do something to resolve this concern.
But that also may mean that if they withdraw, that you would have a reduction of force, correct?
If we were facing that big of a reduction in revenue, we would probably be looking at some impact to service. So that's, that's the whole reason we're even having this conversation. And you're right, there's probably really nothing fair about it. The formula that was come up with before, they, they thought that would work. And 10 years later, it's not working anymore. So we're kind of setting that aside and trying to come up with a completely new formula. For the city of Villa Park under the new formula, well, it's not, it's not a formula. It's what your actual property tax dollars are producing. 10.18 cents for every dollar flows to OCFA. With the average for our whole jurisdiction being 11 and a half cents roughly, right now, that doesn't show this city getting an equity payment because of that differential. But it does change a little bit every year. So if you have a lot of property tax growth in a part of your city, part of the TRAs that have a higher percent flowing to OCFA, your 10.18 cents on the dollar could go up, it could go down. It just depends on where growth occurs. And if it does go up over that average for our whole jurisdiction, then an equity payment does get triggered for this.
Lori, how would that, I don't understand that one. I mean, I, I walked in because I've already been through this once and people think I was rude, but I went through it in OCFA as well. I honestly don't understand, how would the, would the 10.18% structural fire fund portion change?
Okay. Every city has several different tax rate areas within it. A tax rate area can be as small as just a couple of parcels. It can be, you know, a whole neighborhood. For Villa Park, I, I don't know the exact count of tax rate areas, but the 1% property tax is distributed slightly different in every tax rate area. So you might have one part, portion of the city that has a lighting district that doesn't completely align with the city boundaries or a school district. So the, the 1% pie gets broken up slightly differently. So let's say you have two tax rate areas in the city and one of those tax rate areas has 11 cents on the dollar flowing to OCFA and the other tax rate area has nine and a half cents on the dollar flowing to OCFA.
Oh, so a difference in appreciation between areas could make a slight change.
Right.
Okay. Great. Let me, let me help you on, in your question, because I spent a bunch of time. Here's what we're really talking about here. This is not an equity resolution. The word equity is not appropriate here. If, if, from an equity perspective, you might look at it and say, what does your community pay and what's it really cost to serve your community? And are you a donor because you're contributing a lot more money than it really costs or should cost to serve your area? And I got to believe that Villa Park falls into the donor category because I see what service we use and I look at the dollar cost and it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure it out. What we're really dealing with here is a third of the revenue comes from the city of Irvine. And the city of Irvine threatened to pull out. If they pull $60 million out of this agency, it's in big trouble. It's already in big trouble. It's over a half a billion dollar deficit now because of pension funding. So they couldn't afford to take that hit. The agency might have collapsed. So what this really came down to was how do we preserve this and cut a deal with the city of Irvine? We've got to save them no matter what. So they worked everything they could think of, I'm sure. And they also had to keep in mind, had to have some legal basis so they could justify doing it. So they came up with this, this average concept of tax because when they penciled it, it kind of worked to an Irvine benefit there. And it, and, and they thought maybe at least financially, maybe we can handle this. That remains to be seen. But it's at least arguably financially viable. There's also a legal argument here where this could potentially make sense. And we hang on to the city of Irvine. So they went for it and, and.
Let's try to avoid shock.
And that, yeah. So they went for it and that's where we got. And then they, then what happened is they realized they couldn't fund it upfront. They'd have to phase it in and the city of Irvine didn't like that. So now all of a sudden, geez, this isn't even going to work because we can't pay it. So then they came back and said, okay, we'll pay the, how do we pay the city of Irvine? We'll just have to cut everybody else out if we have to. So they came in and they designated the city of Irvine as a super donor city and then distinguished it and then phased in the remaining people that were in excess of the, of the 11% or whatever the number was. And they gave Irvine their money right away as a super donor city and then they cut their, they capped their percentage interest.
They haven't really done it yet. This is, this is.
That's what they're trying to do. And that's, and that's what this is all about. This agency, it has great people, but it has an insatiable appetite for cash. It's probably destined for a bankruptcy unless something incredible happens. It's probably a half a billion or a billion dollars underwater in pension funds. So they are just doing what they can do to scrape and hold this thing together.
They're kicking the can down the road.
Yeah. We're, we're kicking the can down the road. Yeah. Unquestionably. So the question is.
It is. You know, we're just delaying the inevitable. And who knows even, even if Irvine stays, whether it's going to stay afloat.
That's a, that's a, that, yeah. That's a legitimate observation, I think. And the question is.
There's no respect why they want to do that.
Here, here's, and I was against this at first because I really felt, just as, as Councilman Pauli did, this is kicking the can down the road. I don't kick cans down the road. Villa Park doesn't kick cans down the road. We discussed this before. And I gave a little spiel and said that we don't do this and I wished you wouldn't at that meeting.
And then you voted yes.
Yeah. Well, here's what happened. No, actually I abstained.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I did abstain. I did abstain. But, but, you know, here's what happens on it. You know the bad side, if you will now. The other side of it is this. The city of Irvine is willing to cut this deal with them. And the city of Irvine is taking a bath way beyond what we're doing. So if we don't do this, I don't know what happens. The city of Irvine could try and go on its own, but it can't necessarily get all the money because the structural fire fund revenue is controlled to some because the structural fire fund revenue is controlled to some extent by the Board of Supervisors, who apparently can determine how they want to allocate it. So if they pull out, they don't necessarily get all the money. They may leave some of it to keep OCFA going and budget some here. I don't know what happens. It's a big mess. I don't know if Irvine would actually do it, but they, they are clearly funding probably tens of millions of dollars in excess of what the legitimate costs are attributable to Irvine. And they're willing to do this. They want to, and, and, and carry on in this fashion. Well, what happens to Villa Park? My understanding is, and you correct me, Lori's the best one to answer this if I'm wrong, our structural fire fund money's locked. They're going to get that money under our contract. It's not going to go up because of this. So on the dollar side, it really doesn't hurt the city of Villa Park, probably. It is a good fire agency. They do do their job, and they're good people. Irvine is the one that's taken the biggest hit, and they're willing to do this deal, and it prolongs it for a while so that they can carry on and do what they're going to do. So that's the other side of the equation. So if we vote against it, you know, presume we may well get outvoted, but if we vote against it, we're able to stop it, I don't know where it ends up. And frankly, I initially was going to, inclined to go that way, because I think the agency needs to face its financial issues, and it needs to get its act together. And, and I suggested that they do that first. And once they get their financial house in order, then they go back to the city of Irvine, and then I would be willing to give it all the attention they want. But here we are, it's moving along, Irvine wants it, they got their problems, they're going to persist anyway. So to me, you know, to me, and I'm not sure it makes any difference, you know? Do you want me to shoot you in the head, or do you want me to shoot you four times in the spine? I mean, you know, I'm just not sure it makes, makes a big difference. Irvine is clearly the one taking the hit. If they want to do this, you know, and buy some time for the fire authority to, to work it out, you know, I decided I wasn't really that adverse to this. We have union negotiations coming up next year, and if they want to deal with this, they got to get on these pension plans and get real. This agency's probably finished, is my guess. So however they want to do it. So that's, that's where it sits, and it's a tough call. You can go get a coin.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett is, is correct. It doesn't make, it, it will not raise your costs, and as far as the structural fire fund, that's fixed as far as the, the city of Villa Park is, is concerned. Let me just finish this, and then we'll, so what has happened so far is the Irvine City Council voted, voted four zero. Mayor Lawloway, or Councilman Lawloway was absent from the meeting when they approved it. OCFA Equity Committee approved it eight to one unanimously?
The Equity Committee.
Equity Committee was eight to one vote. And then the Budget and Finance Committee unanimously voted for it, and then the OCFA Board of Directors voted for it last month. I can't remember what the vote was exactly.
Twenty to three.
Twenty to, twenty to three.
And then one abstention.
And one abstention, and one abstention. And so what we would like you to, what is going to be required for this to, to move forward is that Second Amendment, Second Amendment has to be approved by two-thirds of OCFA's member agencies. Means 16 of the 24 members have to, have to approve it for that amendment to become effective to date. The latest count is eight of our agencies, eight of the cities have approved it, including Laguna Hills and Stanton earlier tonight, all unanimously so far, right? And then the other thing that we're asking you to do is to approve, or to join in supporting OCFA's validation action. One of the things that was brought up during the equity meetings was that this may be challenged in, in court. So it needs to be validated, but in order for it to go through judicial review, before it can go through judicial, judicial review, it has to be a valid contract, right? So, so it has to be approved by 16 of the 24 members before it can go through that judicial review. So once it does become a valid contract, and we have enough of those member agencies approving it, we will go through that.
You may or may not face a lawsuit.
What's that?
You may or may not face a lawsuit.
We're actually going to have it, we're going to bring it forth for judicial review.
They're going to file an action essentially for declaratory, asking the court to rule...
So that, to, to head off, head off any?
Yeah.
Okay. And we don't incur any kind of liability if we're joining you in this action?
That's right. The OCFA's General Counsel and the City of Irvine's General Counsel will do the large burden of the work, and if the cities join in support, it is more of a symbolic gesture to the court to show that there is a good base of support throughout the county.
Okay.
But the cost will be borne by OCFA and the City of Irvine.
I'm so happy this has come to this council.
If I, could I just speak a little bit to the concern of the pension and kicking the can down the road as it relates to this particular proposal?
Absolutely.
Because the same evening that our board approved this for consideration by all of the cities, they also approved a plan to accelerate pay down of our pension liability. So if we do nothing and only pay down the pension liability as required by the retirement system, we won't be done paying that bill for 29 years. But the plan that our board approved will have that bill paid down in 16 years. And part of it was use of funds that are currently tied up under the current equity formula. If that formula gets replaced by this new formula, we have year-end fund monies that we can now start dedicating towards the pension liability. So it was really all a strategic plan to work together to where we get Irvine locked in through 2030, we pay down our pension liability within that time, 16 years. If we get to the end of the JPA in 2030, and we're still having the same conversation with Irvine, that they are desirous to depart OCFA, it's not the same threat to us. We can peacefully part at that point in time, knowing our bills are paid, our financial house is in order, and, and we don't have to come back to all of you asking for another fix for the city of Irvine. So that's the plan.
Lori, I have a quick question. Under the old formula, it was going to take 29 years for the unfunded liabilities, and that was with cash cows giving you extra money. Now, you guys are paying back them 6 million, you're paying the other cities more. How can you get it to 16 years?
Right.
How could you not do it the one way, and you could do it the other way? Do you see what I'm saying? With less money?
They're both part of the plan. So what has occurred with the, the pension payments is, first of all, if we eliminate the prior equity formula, that frees up year-end money, which we couldn't count on before because that potentially would be dedicated towards the structural fire fund entitlement fund. It's at the end of the year. It's not part of the budget. We don't know exactly how much it's going to be until we close out the budget, close out the audit for the fiscal year. We can't tell you what line item it's going to come out of, but we know based on our history that it's typically, on average, about 3 million per year. So that's the first component to the plan. The second component is, we had previously had projections built in for our retirement payments based on prior projections that we had gotten from OCSRs for a five-year period. So our retirement rates were hitting a plateau over the next few years, and then basically we had held them and grew them at future salary increases. We got new long-term projections from the retirement system for 15 years. They've had a couple of years of very good gains. They built in the PEPRA provisions, which we had never anticipated in our forecast before, and so you start to see some relief in those retirement contributions. Instead of saying, good, now we don't have to pay as much, we had already planned on paying the higher amounts. We're, we're basically freezing those dollars and keeping them dedicated towards pension. And that's the lion's share of how we get that bill paid off.
Got it. Okay.
The return of money for the equity payments comes from growth in property taxes. We have four and a half percent growth overall, five and a half from the city of Irvine alone. But just a year ago, we weren't projecting that. We had projected about 3 percent.
On your pension funding, what kind of percentage returns are you anticipating or actually projecting?
The retirement system is assuming seven and a quarter, so our projections...
I think that's really too high. That's way too high. I think you should go a much, much more conservative route on your planning, because...
Yeah, we don't get to assume that.
That's, that's done at a county level.
Well, I know it is.
It's an Orange County Employees Retirement Fund decisions at the county level, and the answer to the question that, and Lori's great, but the answer to the question about, about how do we get the money, her comments, and then you add to that, my opinion, speculation and prayer, okay? Because the track record and the history in other cities don't show it's going to work. They show these pensions funds increasing. There's no consideration given to, to, to extended life expectancies in the future. I mean, it's just...
Well, PEPRA does that, doesn't it?
Not, not...
Doesn't it partially do that?
PEPRA reduces the pension benefit significantly, and it increases the employee's...
They're instituting it, but that's a doubt, that's kind of be, as you're losing people by attrition, you're bringing new people in. That's what's happening.
Right, right.
So you're hoping by 2030, you've got, you've got enough new people in under the new system that you're going to be okay.
They use our, our actual activity to project.
But the, but the bigger issue to me, and I, I don't, you know, I'm not there all the time like you and Brad have been, but, but this is what I think I understand. Under the old formula, you would have to hold on to our $300,000 slightly overfunded. You call it $300,000 slightly. In the city of Villa Park, that's a big chunk of money. But, but I can understand in your picture, it's not. So, so, so it used to be that you would have to hold on to that, because that was really money that you would have to dedicate to us in some other fashion when we're, no?
No.
You just absorb it right into the whole thing.
That was, so that was a calculation that determined who was eligible potentially to use year-end monies for enhanced fire services. But the board had the discretion every year whether or not they would allocate it, and in actuality, the board has only allocated monies to those funds two times in the history of the current JPA.
I see.
So in the last 13 years, it's only been...
Deborah, you might...
But, but that's not even a factor anymore. You just assume that we're not paying enough, starting from today.
You, you might want to ask, to a point of interest, how much money will have to be paid over the term to the donor cities under this plan?
Well, I see this. I see these figures.
I believe the number's 184 million.
I've got this entire laid out here. It's just, it's shocking.
Am I right, Lori? It's 184?
It's 184.
So there's 184 million dollars of revenue loss over this term that has to be dealt with in addition to bringing up the pension funding. So, you know, again, you know, it's, it's a giant speculation. It's a smokeball. Who knows? There are so many assumptions built into it. God only knows, so...
Did you finish your entire, you finished your entire presentation? I, I do have one question, just if we, we could approve the city manager to execute the substituted Second Amendment and not authorize the city attorney? We, we don't have to approve both. They don't come tandem. We could do that.
No words on that.
You know, it's a shame, but, you know, we have, this is, this is our fire, this is what we've got.
Yeah.
Very difficult.
And, and we really, and really...
There's not much we can do about it.
And really, if we don't, we're at risk truly of imploding our fire department when we're ill-prepared to deal with it.
Yeah. All right. You guys can just stay there if you want, in case there's other questions, but any other questions from council? Probably not right now. I want to open it up to the public if anyone has any comments or questions. I see none, so it's going to come back to council.
What's the anticipated timeline of this whole thing? Rick, what's the anticipated timeline of this proposal?
They have, do you get through all the steps? Can we go back to the steps that we have to go through?
16 out of 24.
Is that what you're looking for?
We're at eight.
I mean, the bottom line is, if you, if we sign off on this, and they get their two-thirds, they're going to implement it. They're going to file a declaratory relief action with the court, ask the court to adjudicate it's appropriate. And they're going to proceed. So for all practical purposes, it's going to be immediate. I mean, what's...
This is where we are now, but there's nothing that tells us what happens next.
The timeline is...
Now you're going through the cities, and once you get all the cities...
We're going through the cities. We've got, they're all scheduled right now to go in front of their councils. We anticipate having all of them considered by December 10th.
Oh, so this is quite some time.
Yeah. The bulk of them are getting done by mid-November with a few that spillover into the beginning of December.
All right, thank you.
This, this issue is completely collateral to the, to the agency's real problem, which is getting a handle on their labor, labor and pension costs, okay? That's what the problem is. This is, this is a symptom of it, and, you know, there's really no easy answer to this. As I say, I went one way, and then I started leaning the other way and thinking, you know what? Irvine's the one that's taking the biggest bath. If they want to do this and continue to subsidize the agency, then, you know, so what? I don't have a great, you know, I haven't a desire to tank the agency.
No, no.
But Irvine is taking advantage of its position to completely tank, you know, really rob, rob the...
Absolutely. Absolutely. Irvine is getting an advantage from, from a taxpayer perspective. Irvine is getting a tax break.
Over every other city.
They hold, they hold the card.
Every other city.
That's right. They're getting the tax break because of it. Now, if we vote against it, I don't know that Irvine will really pull out, or what they'll do. There's big risks with them.
It, it looks like they're already, you know, they're halfway toward the number that they need. So we either make a statement that says...
They're going to get their number.
Oh, I know they're going to get their number. So, so what are you thinking? That we just go along to get along, or do we make a statement? That's really what it boils down to.
Lori, just a real quick question you can answer from there. I'm assuming there's no change or talk in changing Engine 23 from four people down to three? Yeah, I assume that. I just wanted to ask, just to be sure. Yeah. Yeah, I think we're stuck. I, I don't see really any alternative.
I think we still, I think we still make a statement. I really think we do. We, in the city of Villa Park, are the voice for conservative fiscal management, always have been, and I think we need to remain being that voice. I think when we vote no, that there needs to be a good sentence that's produced that comes from the council.
Yeah.
And it, and it really boils down to the nuts and bolts of what you're talking about. Get back to the real nuts and bolts, not where, wham, 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 where's our 300,000? But, you know, get your act together, kind of a, a statement that says you have to deal with the real issue here.
My initial, my initial position was, get your financial house in order, knock it off on the defined benefit plans, let's get this place in order, and then I'll sign for whatever you want on Irvine, was in essence my position, okay? However, I don't know that it's going to get there, so do we want to put the squeeze on them?
We don't get to put the squeeze on them.
Who, who can answer if we vote no tonight, what the repercussion is?
Are they, they're not going to...
Is that something you can answer, Jared, or what would be the repercussion of voting no tonight, other than just a statement?
Nothing. It'll probably still pass, and we've made our statement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, right now, it's hard to say what the repercussions would be. We'd just have to let it play out through December.
So, so we're making a statement, it probably still passes if the other cities go for it, whatever, and that's that.
Yeah.
Or it starts snowballing and a few other cities say no because we said no. Who knows?
They won't.
Yeah, probably not.
Hardly any cities are as brave as ours.
As the director, Rick, for us, what is your feeling on this?
You know, I got to tell you, I am so torn on this issue. That's why I abstain from the voting.
That's so lame.
It is lame. I never... It's lame. I never do that. I never do that.
You agree you're lame. All right. Awesome. So far we're in G. All right, let's move on from there.
I'm torn between letting Irvine have their relief and putting the whole of the agency together.
That's a good question. What? Go on.
Well, it's kind of...
I'm torn between giving Irvine their relief because they are getting hit so hard and leaving the agency together for a while.
You know, everything's hit so hard relatively. You know, they're getting hit... In the grander scheme of Irvine's budget, it's no more or less than what we're getting hit in the...
Well, they do have a higher percentage. And that's the legal argument that they use to get there, that their percentage is higher. I'm not sure why it's higher, but it's higher.
Greg had a question that I thought was a good one.
If we want to make a statement...
Greg has a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
If we want to make a statement, then we need to craft one. And I don't think we can do that right now.
But he wants to know if we have to approve it tonight. I mean, if they're waiting until December, I think... I like your question. I like...
You can table it.
I think it's something... Or continue it. You would continue it until November. You wouldn't table it. We could continue it until November.
Not sure it's going to be any easier to answer, but...
So let's just look at some facts.
You guys have some time to talk about a statement.
Here's just some facts. Under the old structural fire fund, we are a donor city for 300 grand. We don't get the 300 grand back.
Nope. Right.
So now, under the new, it's status quo. It doesn't cost us any more or any less, right? It's status quo. It's really boiling down to making a statement, basically, is really the case.
That's right.
And we're not in any position to have our own fire department tomorrow. So it's not like we can bail or we're into the contract anyways. So it's pretty much a statement or just go with the flow. Or we wait till next month and could maybe draft something, whatever. I mean...
Here's the deal, Brad. At one point, you were willing to take it to the mat when we were getting ready to, you know, negotiate our contract. Remember, you were...
Oh, we were looking at all our options, yes.
Right. So, you know, I mean, I just think it's important to make a statement.
That was at a time we could make a difference, maybe, depending on our outcomes.
You're not Irvine. We were never going to make a difference. That was a joke.
Well, I don't know about that. Wasn't a joke to me.
Still, if you make a difference, why make a statement? I mean, you have to think we're making a difference if you want to take the time to make the statement. I mean, you do. I don't know if we're in a position that we want to make a statement.
Put your microphone down and say that he thinks it does.
I think we do want to make a statement.
You know, I just...
I'm saying, you do think you're going to make a difference if we move to make a statement.
Sure.
If we don't believe that, there's no reason for that.
If you wait a month, there's going to be plenty of other council meetings that are going to be enacting and/or saying no. If we make a statement today, then that could influence other council meetings.
You know what? Here's the only meaningful thing we could do.
That's true. That's true.
I don't know if it's right to make a statement or not.
They're going to be going to every council meeting.
Here's the only meaningful thing that we could do. Well, at work, I have no idea. Okay? Would be to come out and make a statement that says Villa Park supports the OCFA. However, the problem is one of labor costs in this agency. Okay? So here's the deal. You're coming up...
Be specific.
Coming up... I'm being specific. You're coming up for labor negotiation on this contract, okay? You get away from the defined benefit plan. We're in. We'll sign off on the Irvine deal. You go on the way you are, you know, we're out. That was originally my philosophy. And, you know, then I started thinking about, is this really going anywhere? Do I want to do that? And that's where I kind of waffled out. I guess as I'm getting old, I'm getting soft. I don't know. But that would be the change you could make. If you made a statement that says, look, we're in when you get a handle on this. Now, I suppose if you could draw enough cities into it that said, yeah, you get a handle on this labor cost issue and we're in and we'll put this deal together for you. Now, are we going to make that change? I don't know. If we don't, does it make sense to just be, you know, just be the obnoxious, you know, hard ass, if you will, out here?
I don't think it's a matter of being obnoxious. I think it's a matter of stating what is actually the right thing to do.
Yeah.
This is... We're... It's terribly gone awry. We all know that. Everybody knows that. And all we keep doing is signing on to new creative, flexible formulas. And when that formula doesn't work, then we declare this guy a super-duper donor and what have... You know, it just... We're Villa Park. And there are very few cities that are as conservatively run. If there were, we wouldn't be in this position. If there were strong enough councils in other cities to do the right thing, we wouldn't be in this position.
Okay, so the question comes down to who's going to craft the message and are we even going to do that? We're just going to vote on it now?
Well, it seems like it's a yay or nay, pretty much. I mean, either support it or you don't. I don't know what crafting is.
I'm completely... Frankly, I'm completely on the fence. I don't have any desire to add any more complication to the agency that aren't going to... A, aren't going to assist. But I am frankly frustrated by the fact that I got to sign off on an inequitable deal just to hang on to Irvine when they're not making...
But you don't have to. But you don't have to. But you don't have to do it. You said you have to, but you don't.
Well, in other words, you can agree and protest.
My feeling is we can do yay or nay tonight. Because if we're going to do nay and make a statement, it needs to carry weight. And it's going to carry weight at future council meetings they go to. Because now it ain't eight and zero, now it's eight and one or nine, whatever, you know?
So if you're going to make a statement, you make a statement.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree.
That's it. Do it or don't do it. If you do it, then that's, I think, the way it needs to be done.
If you're going to do it, you have to be bold. You have to be bold.
To support the agency. But until the agency takes recognition of its financial issues by addressing this labor cost and pension issue, you know, we're not going to play in this game. That would be the statement.
I don't know how they can carry that back. It's either a yay tonight or a nay tonight. You can add verbiage to it, but it doesn't... Where is that? It's not anywhere other than just verbiage.
It makes you feel better to add your verbiage, Greg. But I mean...
They're not going to carry a letter around with them. Well, Villa Park's a no, but here's what, you know, there's not that either. Yes or no.
That would just be the basis that would go out if somebody said, why didn't Villa Park do it? Well, this is why they didn't do it.
Oh, we issue a press release tomorrow morning.
You know, I'm all ears on this. I'm just so on the fence.
That's what you do.
That's why I abstain. I just...
Well, is, you know, is that an option tonight to abstain or it's a yay or nay?
No, we're not going to do that.
I'm not saying that. I'm just asking. I mean, you abstained. I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, I abstained because I was one of 25 sitting there with the entire...
An abstain is a yes. An abstain is a yes.
Yeah. She's right. It was a cop-out vote.
I say, I say, I say that we vote no. We craft a simple, one or two-sentence statement and send that off and just send it out. And I think you should let the media know that, you know, this is the issue. Lay it out there. They already know. You know, Irvine does have all the balls. We've already talked about that. Come on. Come on, Rick. At least don't abstain.
What other... What's the...
Get off the fence.
We got to love to hear the consensus. What are the rest of you think?
I say we vote no.
I see both sides.
I say we vote no.
Rick says we vote no.
I'm Greg.
I'm sorry, Greg. I know that.
Yes, I'm not up here to make a statement.
I'm sorry.
I'm not up here to make a statement.
You're leaning yay or nay?
Yay.
You're leaning yay.
I don't want to make a statement. I...
No statements.
I am not here...
Just want to go along to get along.
To fix the fire authority. We can't. We are Villa Park. Let's move on and take care of the issues that we can deal with within our city at this point. I'm not going to take them on.
Yeah, it's not costing us any more money. It's a no-win, to be honest. We're not going to fix it or not fix it, to be honest.
It's a policy-issue statement. That's what it is. I doubt we're going to make a difference in the outcome. I'll bet you they get the votes. I mean, I really don't know. Maybe not.
I think they'll get the votes, too.
Maybe not. I don't know.
But you still can make statements, man.
But that's the issue. I mean, if you want to vote no, I suppose you could always change it to that yes later if it's...
You know what? The problem... This whole go-along-get-along thing where everybody's terrified to do the right thing because they don't... They're afraid they're not going to get along is how we got this far in this country, period. That's how OCFA got where it is. That's how other cities are in trouble. That's how states that are in trouble are in trouble. That's why our country's in trouble. Stand up!
Yeah. She has a point. I mean, the bottom line is the agency has an insatiable appetite for funding. You can't satisfy it, okay? That's probably the real reason that we've got the pickle. They can't afford to make concessions across the board like they should on an equitable basis to reduce it. So they have to go cut a deal with Irvine. So the question is, you know, do we yield to that just to keep pushing along or do we just say enough's enough? You know, deal with the reality and get on whether we're not going to... And that's the issue. And I spent some time... That was my initial view. And then I got... Probably I got brow-beaten by... It was just overwhelming on the other side. And, you know, would it really make a difference? I don't know. But, you know, in all honesty, I guess if you really want to... Deborah's right. I mean, if you really want to stand up and stand on a principle and say this is baloney, you're not going to sit here and add to this patch job because you don't have the responsibility, okay, and kick this can down the street.
I'm surprised this equity thing didn't come up long... It's been talked about a long time, right, Lori? I'm surprised it took this long, actually.
Yeah.
It took somebody... It took a council member in the city of Irvine to... But he's looking out for the city of Irvine only. And, you know...
Well, Jeff Lalloway, who's their rep, doesn't like it. He got beaten into the vote.
Oh, no. He didn't get beaten into the vote. This is posturing. You do not know Jeff Lalloway like I know Jeff Lalloway. He got what he wanted. He got exactly what he wanted. And he gets to act like he didn't get enough. That makes him even look better. Okay. But I say that we... I say that we make a motion that we reject the submitted Second Amendment to the amended Orange County Fire Authority JPA agreement. I say we reject it.
One second. Any further discussion or an alternative?
I guess, you know...
God, we can't talk about it anymore.
Yeah, it's getting late.
Yeah. I mean, you know, frankly, I was leaning toward approving it. But I have to concede that it bothers me and I think it sends the wrong signal. And I think the reason we got here with all agencies in this country is because we just keep doing this. It's not our money. And we just keep kicking this can. And that is what it's doing. Okay? So I guess to that extent, I really wouldn't have a problem voting against it. And I would just do so if we do with the advice that if they get their act together and attend to their labor issues and start dealing with these issues, I would consider coming back here and changing my vote.
They don't care about those words. It's a yes or a no without...
Well, for now.
All right. So we got a motion and a second, Jared.
Go.
Yeah. Honestly, I mean, just to comment on that, I don't think it would matter. I think they're going to get their 16 votes, no problem.
Probably.
Right. But we still...
And we all know that.
We still come out strong for good fiscal management.
At least we don't sacrifice our principles, I guess.
Well, okay.
So the motion is to not approve the Second Amendment addressing equity concerns. Councilman Paul.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Fessinelli.
No.
Mayor Proton Barnett.
Yes.
Mayor Reese.
Yes.
Number two.
Okay.
We don't even supporting the...
Item 11.
We don't... Do we... Well, Greg does raise a good question. We don't have to take any action on the second item?
No, we won't take action.
Thank you.
Want to propose the other? Okay. I'll make sure. Okay, now it is time to hear individual council member information items, starting with... How about you, Greg, tonight?
I attended the vector control meeting this month and it was very active. They're looking for some more exposure in the local newspapers and all the periodic... local periodicals. They also are making sure that all their seasonal workers are working less than 28 hours a week. That's a big deal because otherwise it'll throw them into the Obamacare ring. So they're very cognate of their abilities to pay their people properly. And if they go to 30 hours, then they are automatically covered in their insurance. But what they're also trying to do is just to make sure that they have the correct buffer to make sure they don't approach it. Because some employees are... If they get close to 30, by rounding, they're worried about that as well. So I think they're taking some good action. The vector control has not raised their rates in about 30 years. So they're using the same formulas that we talked about tonight. And they're still getting by with all of that. And they have expanded their workforce. And they also got into a situation where they had to buy the building adjacent to them, believe it or not.
They had to?
They had to. Well, it made the most fiscal sense and they did the right thing. They bought it and they ran it out and they make money on it.
Oh, really? Okay.
And then they also have a cell tower. Another cell tower's moving in. And that's another $3,000 a month. It's, you know, it's in the corner of the lot like ours. So it works out well. So they're very cognate about what they're doing. Now, of course, they did have to re-up with Nick Veridino and his Orange County Employees Association. But we were stuck in that. That's like a lobster trap. They had to vote in protest to accept the workers' union contract. Because as you know, as far as the Sanitation District, we had to do all those Form 700s, which is a big hassle every time.
Had to do that with vector, too, right?
All of them, yeah.
And fire.
It depends on how the administrators handle that, though. They're all different.
Yeah.
So the library, there was no waves going on the library, the library committee, except for the next race. But that's down the line. So we'll see what happens with our next race here in town. And then, of course, we had the CDC wall tonight. So we know how that went. And then we had a town hall also on Friday after the CDC meeting where we had three operators come in and give what they wanted to see as far as us, the city, helping them with enhancing their business, which included, you know, Billy. We had Gary McCarty. We had Suzie and Christie. And so it was a nice conversation we had for about two hours. So it worked out well.
That's great.
And then we got names. And I've started to call the folks at Ralph's, both the real estate people and also the property director. There's two different things there, to see what we can do to look out and work together to keep the whole center picked up and clean and tidy and make the appearance better without impacting the owners and having them charge more money to all the operators. They're all complaining about that. They're always going to complain. The rent's always too high. And they're going to say the rent's not high enough as far as the owners. So we'll try to work on that. And it'll take several months to get any further. And Deanna, I'm sure will have some other comments about that, too. That's all I have.
Before you go, Deborah, just a real quick comment, Greg, of what you mentioned about CDC and on the Fitch and Ranch Road deal tonight. Number one, I kind of feel bad about that because I know how much time you and Deanna spend on CDC. I've been there for many years. We've done that. It is a lot of work, a lot of time. And you guys drill down on the issues very deep. And you'd like to think that when you bring a recommendation to council, your fellow colleagues would go with it. And I really feel bad about that tonight because I know that's kind of a bummer. And I just want to let you know, I appreciate all the work you guys do because I know it's a lot. And I've been in the same seat you're in where we brought the recommendations. They don't fly. So I just want to just mention that, you know, that I do feel...
Well, the folks spoke, so...
I know. But I'm just appreciating your service because I know it's a lot.
I want to reiterate that, too, because I had the same exact feeling when that was going down. I just looked at it. It just looked like it made sense and I went with it.
That's okay.
It's okay.
Yeah, but think about this.
It will be the last one.
It probably won't. But I was thinking we were going to make 10, but I'm not.
Well, but, you know, think about the last couple of months, though. They came forward with things that everybody was extremely thrilled with. And so you really win big.
It's not an easy job.
You win some big.
Yeah, it's tough.
It takes a lot of our time.
It does. And I see that time. You guys do a great job. You really do.
But you're learning a lot. And it's a really good thing. It's a good thing to learn. I like learning so much that I spent the entire day on October 10th with the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association Conference. And there were a lot of outstanding speakers there talking about what's happening in the state that are really jeopardizing the future of our tax base. But in particular, the chipping away what they're trying to do right now with Prop 13. We're all familiar with Prop 13. We're also familiar with how it actually assists us in the budgeting process because it's kept our primary revenue stream relatively stable. We're not rolling high and low with the punches. And so if the bottom drops out, we haven't got our budgets skyrocketed. But they're always looking for more money. There's never enough money in the black... Great Black Hole of Sacramento. So they are trying to figure out how they can get around this. They realize that if they try to attack Prop 13 in its entirety, the people who own homes will come up in arms. So what they are trying to do right now, their biggest effort, is to bifurcate the tax rolls and just go after the business. They think that they would be able to sell that to the people. Let's stick it to the big guy who owns the business, not realizing that all that's going to trickle down to all of us, you know? It doesn't matter. If businesses are paying, you know, an inflated or a larger property tax chunk, it's all going to be passed on down to us. So there was a lot of discussion about that.
And fewer employees.
Pardon me?
And fewer employees.
Well, fewer employees. You know, even if you're living in apartments, you don't own a home, those apartments are a business. And all of those folks would be paying higher rents. So and everything that you buy would cost more because they would pass the savings right along to us, you know? They have to pay higher taxes. But there was a lot of strategy discussion, a lot of information on the different ways that they may be going about doing it. Our job should be to stay on top of it and figure out how we can fight it. We need to fight it. Another thing that I thought was interesting, and you guys might already know this, but that $7,000 homeowner's exemption that you see on your property taxes, that has not been adjusted in any fashion since the 1970s. And back at that time, you know, that was like the third of your... That was like a third of your home price. So imagine what it would be like if you could have an exemption that was about a third of your average home price in Orange County as an annual exemption. But that's...
They never index your beneficial exemption.
No, no. There's nothing there that's a formula that could be modified and messed with that changes anything. But there were others, though, that were discussing things that I won't get into the details of. But it was a very good discussion about what's happening in the trucking industry that are significant and could have significant impacts on the price of goods that are delivered to our areas. The amount of money is ridiculous. But all of these actions that are being taken, this is already happening. And all the regulations and the fees and the requirements to retrofit these trucks are actually just sending them out of the state. It's just killing... It's killing business here locally. And it makes it even cost more to bring things into the state because they have to stop at the border and change things over, yeah, to another truck. So those were things that I hadn't change things over, yeah, to another truck. So those were things that I hadn't really thought much of. You know Robert Ming, he's terrific. He talks quite a bit about the part, the harm that would come to local governments with repealing Prop 13. And then there are other issues that were discussed that we got into the afternoon session with primary strategy and how we go about fighting that. And I've been, I, I appreciate the work they've done. If you look at the number of residents that actually benefit from Prop 13 in our community, it's a large number of them, so we should stay on top of that. On the 14th, I stopped by the Villa Park Community Services Foundation meeting for the express purpose of delivering a public comment. And my public comment stems from the fact that there was a public notice put in the newspaper about the Boat Parade Committee and inviting residents who wanted to volunteer to be part of the Boat Committee to come to that, those meetings. And one of our residents showed up and was less than welcomed, and a subsequent Boat Parade meeting that was supposed to be held in a public building, the Serrano Water District, was moved to a private residence. And when she went to that private residence as a volunteer, a member of our community, and a member of the foundation, a paying member of the foundation, she was not permitted entrance. And I was extremely upset by that. No matter what any of the other details are that are surrounding it, we've talked repeatedly at the council about, you know, how, how we treat our volunteers and that when there's a clique that's formed and only certain people are allowed to participate, other people feel bad. And, and I've just seen things raised up around the Boat Parade repeatedly, and it made me really unhappy. I'm sure Di, I had to leave. I was pretty upset. And I'm sure Diana, Deanna will tell us what happened after I left. On the 15th, I went to the ORWF luncheon where Supervisor John Morlock is speaking. I bring that up because you know he is running to be our new congressional representative in the 45th Congressional District. He is probably one of the most brilliant financial and budgetary minds in Orange County, if not the nation. He's highly regarded. And he gave a briefing on, just briefly, I'm just going to give you what I consider to be the highlights, the county's CAFR unrestricted net deficit. The unrestricted net deficit is $10 million, which is only $3 per person. That's not that bad. So if everybody pitched in $3, we could level that net deficit out. But if we add in the pension and health benefits, which do not show up on that balance sheet, that's $5.6 billion unfunded obligation, which means every $1,400 per capita, that's just the county. Now you go up to the state, it's an $11,500, $11,511 per capita to cover the California's half trillion dollar unrestricted net deficit, just the net deficit. And then, of course, when you get to the federal government, just the, the deficit spending is $1.27 trillion, and we're sitting on $17 trillion worth of debt. And that's where we are, folks. And so anything that we can do to make a statement, we should make that statement. We need to make that statement for the future.
It's got to start somewhere.
For the future of our country. I spent three days in Charlotte, North Carolina, with briefings on governmental issues, things that are happening in our country, what's happening with the Council on Foreign Relations and foreign entanglements, what's happening with Common Core, and I intend to bring a speaker out here, the doctor who spoke to what's happening with Common Core in our schools. It is not what it's cracked up to be. It is even worse than No Child Left Behind, with many of the parents absolutely rejected. There are a lot of dangerous things that are built into this, and he agreed to come out here at the beginning of December. So there were a couple of other things that I learned while I was there, but I thought I would share that with you, because I, I think, I think we need to start paying attention to what's happened to Common Core. If you're a parent, you need to start paying attention to what's happened with Common Core. Sunday night, and when, as soon as I flew back in, I went straight to a banquet for the troop 241. You're familiar with troop 241, aren't you?
Mm-hmm.
Troop 241 had their 50th anniversary celebration, and they had invited me to come. And I presented a, a resolution on behalf of the city. There were several hundred people that were there, and the speakers that they had were so meaningful, the history of that troop, the history of scouting in Orange County. I never knew that at the beginning of the 1900s, when the scouting, scouting came to Orange County, they had a national jamboree out at Irvine Ranch, and that is the reason why we have the name Jamboree Road. I never knew that before that night. But one of the speakers had us absolutely in tears talking about how he had influenced the life of one young man, and it was just terrific. But one of the things that they had, only 170 of these have been made. Now, Rick, there was a list of people in here that were Eagle Scouts. Is, are, are you one of those?
Kerry Adams probably in there, George Adams probably in there, Travis Adams is probably in there.
Oh, because there's all these, oh, okay, I guess I have, I thought, I thought it was...
Over on the back, you'll see SA Recycling sponsored it, and that's their company.
Oh, no, no, what, okay. No, 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 because I see these names in here, and I thought, well, maybe that, maybe that's somebody that you knew.
No, I got an eagle coming up, but I'm not an eagle.
Okay. Well, you know what? They were glad to see a representative from Villa Park there. There were Villa Park residents there that came up and thanked, thanked the city for showing up. And so I was glad to be there.
Did they give us a notice?
I got an email inviting me, and then I had several phone calls, and I just forwarded to, I assumed everyone got it.
Nope.
Nope.
Well, I forgot that I, I...
We didn't get it.
This past month, too. I did, I went to the Girl Scout Gold and Silver Award...
Yeah.
On a Saturday. And so that, we, we had proclamations all made up for them.
I went to that last year, it was really neat.
Yeah, so, but I'm glad you got that done for our city.
Well, I think, I think we, as a council, should make an effort to have at least one representative of these kinds of things to encourage the young people when they're doing this good stuff, and the parents who support them. It's so, it's important.
I think we do pretty well with that.
I do. I think we do.
We do pretty well with that.
I think we do, but I just wondered...
Rarely do we miss one.
I don't think we do. I just wanted to make sure you knew I covered one for us.
Yeah.
I'm pulling my share of the weight. That's all. We already talked about Judy Johnson, and that was, that was devastating.
Okay, yeah. All right. On October 16th, we had an investment advisory committee. Rick is actually the chair, but he couldn't make it that day. I am the, I'm under Rick on that committee, and I was able to make it. So just a few highlights is that by having our investments be a little different, instead of putting it all in LIF and OCIP, we've made $18,000 more for the city.
Yeah.
We're using, we've been doing laddering. Now they're kind of bunched all the different funds that we're using. Our reserves are now at 26%. So we, this committee does wonderful work. Bill Nelson, Bill Underwood, Dan Carlberg, Jim Ryan, Stephen Pollack, Rick and I are on it, and Dennis Couli. Absolutely awesome. I'm so impressed. I mean, we're just comes, and, and the people before them did really well, too. I'm just, I just am so pleased with that group. Just great, great job. Talked with Mike Christensen from OUSD, kind of hit him up on parking in the back of CV to, to free up the streets. After his research, he talked about, well, not, not that great of an idea. The asphalt is very thin back there where the basketball courts are. Plus, the kids who go out there and play on it, they don't want any oil from leaking cars on it. Granted, they do park back there on certain occasions. He mentioned that we could park, they could park at the high school and walk over. I had mentioned to him that we're looking at no parking signs maybe for Dodson and Bryn Mar, like Feather Hill. Of course, you'd have to do Mark as well.
Brad, you're referring to, like, on the weekend?
Yes, weekend.
This is for the weekend, in case anyone's listening.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, that conversation's kind of continuing. We, you know, I think I mentioned last time, he did open up the schools, Villa Park Elementary and Serrano on the weekend. Jared, he did mention that it's three keys for the lock boxes, is what we're down to on that. So that is definitely moving. So a lot of good conversations going on there. I, I would like to see, Jared, I, I don't know what it would take to do a little study, if you will, on temporarily maybe trying signs on the weekends on those streets. Of course, they may just move up to other streets farther up, but just a thought, you know, on that one. I did have people complain about that. I think I mentioned that to you. I did, I did, I have on my phone a bunch of stuff I was going to read about Orange County sanitation. We've been working on a five-year plan for months. It finally is over, and the plan is really, really good. And I could sit here for literally 10 minutes and read a lot of neat things, but to spare you all, folks, trust me, it is good.
Can we just have the highlights of, of what's happening with OCFA? Just a big chunk?
Well, you mean, you mean sanitation.
I'm sorry, the, yeah, San, yeah, San District.
They have a new general manager, Jim Herberg, who is just absolutely awesome. He came from within the ranks. He's an engineer. Not that Jim Ruth wasn't awesome, he was very good as well. Jim has been retained on a very small amount. He's actually negotiating with their union, and he does a wonderful job. He's so talented at that. So it's, it's kind of hard to bring specifics, Deborah. Like I say, I could, I can give this to you offline, but bottom line is, it just goes in the future, talks about AQMD, talks about reducing chemical usage, talks about saving ratepayers money, talks about wanting to put less discharge in the ocean. Currently, we put 50% in the ocean, 50% to GWRS for drinking water. All good things, just all good things. The current rates we all pay, they did get raised up, as you know, probably about four months ago, five months ago. We still are in the bottom two-thirds, I would say, looking at other wastewater agencies. The agency has ran very, very well. I'm very pleased with that agency. I wished OCFA ran that well. I've made that statement before, but...
Is that five-year plan expecting to have another rate increase during that five?
No, definitely not.
So, well, not going to have another one?
Definitely not.
That's the real, that's the real issue.
I agree, yep.
Okay.
And, and as you know, in lieu of borrowing money, you know, that rate increase or taking down the reserves, blah, blah, blah. So that's all I'm going to report on tonight.
Good. Good point.
Well, you all shared the joy I've had for some time this evening. I don't know that I'm going to drag anybody else, drag any, it just goes on and on. You know, frankly, it's almost like a movie. I feel like I'm in a, I feel like I'm in some...
A horror, like a horror flick?
Yeah, horror action. I mean, it just, it never ends down there. I mean, the, the, the cash demands are insatiable, you know, there's screw-ups galore. We've got hazardous waste issues, refunding millions of dollars. Now, the person that was involved in that's on suspension. I'm getting papered with letters from a South County resident who monitors the heck out of this thing. And, and now we just got a letter from, sounds like a whistleblower fireman, wrote a letter and hit a lot of points about how bungled up it is. So, you know, it's a very nice group of people down there. By and large, the, the guys are, are good guys, and they, and they'll do whatever for you, but it's just so screwed up and financially, it's just so financially underwater that it's just, it's frustrating. You can't, you want to do what you can do for them to sustain it and keep it going, but, you know, it never addresses the core issue of the labor costs are out of control. So you saw it, and I'm not going to talk anymore about it. Have a good time. Go, Deanna.
Okay.
Don't think about it anymore.
Well, you know, let's start with the, the Water Board. On October 8th, they went to a Serrano regular board meeting, some changes that Serrano's making now that they have a, a new manager. Their employees are going to have uniform shirts so that they are clearly identified as Serrano Water employees. And their work trucks are getting new labels, so they're very large and identifiable. One of the reasons they said is since we have such large lots of land, when you open up your door and you see a, a white truck across the street, they want to make sure that you know that it's a Serrano Water truck. So those are some of the things they're doing over there. The chlorine was, is completely implemented, has been now for approximately 30 days. So there hasn't been any issues, so that is up and running.
Long project.
Yeah, it was a very long project. On the 19th, they will have, be having a reception where the council's invited to visit the plant. So look for your invitation coming up.
November, November?
Yeah, November 19th. It is actually 3 o'clock prior to the council meeting.
Did they ever find the leak that's been pouring water down Lemon or whatever?
Don't know. That hasn't come up in the board meeting, so I'm going to...
Jared knows.
On the corner, Alice?
I don't know. I just know there's a spot in Villa Park that continues to dribble water in the, that can, the speculation was that it's a leaking Serrano line that nobody seems to have located. I just remember getting a lecture on this.
You know, I'm, I'm unaware of that one. There was, there was one on Lemon and Alice, and that was a sprinkler in a resident's front yard. Then there was another leak that we couldn't locate in front of the Parker Larson Circle, and that was going on for months with Serrano Water. And then one day, when they called us, Akram and I believe Mike Knowles went out there, and it was actually coming through an old cable line, cable conduit in the street. So it wasn't located, it was just, you know, bubbling up at, at that location, raising to the highest point. So it was a leak that was about 600 feet away, traveling through cable conduit.
That, I think, was probably what, because whatever it was, it'd been going on for a while, and there was missing water and, yeah, okay.
Deanna, is the new GM also the manager of the Irvine Rec activity, or, or no?
No.
So?
No, he's not. I'm not, there's a transition going on there right now, so I'm not sure who's taking that, who's taking that.
I'm pretty sure it's David Noyes is still doing it.
It should be. He's on, he's on contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Then, let's see, I'm going a little bit out of order. On the 25th of September, Jared and I went to an OCTA forum, forum and a planning committee in Tustin. What they did, they had approximately 20 cities that had come in, and they were discussing transportation in the future and trying to figure out what we're going to do. And one of the issues is not necessarily what we're going to do within individual cities, but you have transitions from the 5 freeway, from the 405. In each individual city, what are their issues with traffic, trying to get their employees in and out? Now, of course, Villa Park is not Buena Park, we are not Costa Mesa, but we have our own issues here. And one of them happens to be with the amount of cars that enter the city every day, and the amount of cars that leave every day. And it all happens within a 20-minute period in the morning with, with school, and a 20-minute period at the end. So Jared and I are looking into working with OCTA as far as minimizing the number of cars that come in with the students. Could be by some sort of a, a walking campaign, a biking campaign. It's something that is not going to turn around in the next year, but that we need to look at in the future. What they said is, when we have our students leaving the state, going to college and coming back, they're calling it urbanization, they're coming back here, and they don't want to drive, because they've now been to other states that they no longer need a car. And they come back here, and they're not, they're not staying. And so they're looking at the future as to how can they, how can we get a rapid transit? How can we get trolleys? Anaheim's getting a trolley, Santa Ana's getting a trolley system. So, we talked a little bit.
So they think the reason that the young college graduates aren't staying in California is because they don't have a trolley system, not because they can't find a job?
No, as far as in their own, in their own business, that's what they think. They're thinking...
That's because they want to brainwash everybody into buying a new brollet train or something.
Well, they, actually, that wasn't number one on their hit parade, to be honest with you.
No, no, it's not right now.
It wasn't, yeah.
Do we need a limit? Do we need a center-taft overpass for the morning?
Yeah.
If they're coming down center, you overpass on Taft to pass all this school traffic to Villa, Villa Park High.
That'd be, that's...
A center-taft overpass.
Yeah, I want an overpass. I want to put our, our proposal in.
Okay. I'll tell them that next time we get that.
An overpass from, from Taft to pass Santiago on Center, by the school.
And what is it? And Orange wants to put a, an off-ramp at Meats. So, I mean...
Orange wants an off-ramp at Meats.
They've talked about that for a long time.
That's been on their books for a long time.
It would be kind of neat.
They designed the bridge to accommodate it. If you look at it, it's all, it's all there. They got to buy some homes if they do it.
They'll have to tear down a apartment building.
They actually spent a lot of money on that already.
Yeah, it wouldn't be bad.
That is coming someday.
It's coming.
It is.
Really?
That one's coming, for real.
Is that the one that widened the bridge?
Yeah, the bridge is designed completely for that.
Oh, was it designed for the old path?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it is.
Well, not an overpass, but an off-ramp, on an off-ramp, yep.
All right, so...
You should have, everybody...
The foundation meeting, had a foundation meeting on the 14th. And I'm just going to, Deborah did come and speak, and we did have, what happened with the foundation is, was correct. We, there was a meeting that was posted in the paper. That meeting took place here. The next meeting was not posted in the paper. How the location at the Serrano Water Board came up, I was never told. I didn't know about the meeting, but that's where it was supposed to be, in their boardroom. That evening, I did have a resident call me, because they went to the meeting and were not there, and found out where it had been changed. It had been changed to a private resident. That resident did not allow that person in their home. She refused to enter.
So mean.
Which she has a right to not allow anyone into her home. I don't believe it'll be happening again. What came out of this was we have committees, and they're not standing committees. And they can pick and choose who they want to be on the committee. And some people don't want to work with certain volunteers. And I wish I had a fix to this, but I don't. There isn't any fix, because it's not a standing committee. Right now, we have a shortage of volunteers, and it's a quandary here, because we have somebody who wanted to volunteer that wasn't wanted. And then that same evening, I think I had four resignations from the foundation that evening, which, of course, I didn't accept, because it's not my place to accept it. And I told them if they wanted to resign, that they would have to bring it to the council.
Direct, I mean, board member?
Board member resignations, yes.
Wow.
Well, you know what? When they witness something like that, that you, you have to understand what happened. And I'm just going to call it out, because Sandy Merg had volunteered for a long time, and she gave money to the foundation. She's been, she's a very generous and loving Christian woman. And she and her husband both have worked tire, you know, they've worked. During that transition, after Karen Holti stopped doing the Boat Parade, there was a lot of flux. But she stepped up to try to do her best with the moved location down there by Wanda. But she recognized there were a lot of things that were not getting done, and so she made a whole list of things.
Deborah, I gotta say...
No, she made a whole...
I don't know that this is appropriate.
It is not a...
Discussion of people's religious beliefs and they're great people and telling the whole story.
What's wrong with saying that she's a great person?
I've heard both sides of the story. I, I'm just going to suggest, I don't think this is appropriate.
I think it's inappropriate. I think it's inappropriate for any one individual or any group of, of clique of individuals to, to completely...
Not a trial.
Force one individual or a couple of volunteers that are members of this community, members of the foundation, and reject them and say, no, you're just not good enough to be part of this Boat Parade of committee, or any committee that is a community event, a foundation that falls under the foundation, our foundation, our community services foundation.
Are they foundation members, Deborah?
Yes, they are. I checked on, I actually went to check on the website to be sure. They are. And, and that it's done under the auspices of the City of Villa Park. You know, there are plenty of committees that put together events in this community, and I've never heard of anything like that happening, of, of any others. The, the Friends of the Library, they all work together. They accept anybody who wants to volunteer. They find a place for them. She had an entire box of things that she had put together with clipboards and, and, you know, flashlights, things that she had said, we needed these things, we didn't have them last year. And, and she was, she went to a private home, and it was just an absolutely hideous thing for that individual to do. I don't care what their reason was. But they purposefully moved the meeting. That's the part that's awful. And it is appropriate.
I think Deanna mentioned that they're going to try to...
I hope they do.
It's unfortunate, it is unfortunate.
But the repercussions are bad.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate. It probably shouldn't have been held at a private house.
Right. And, and Doug Bender and I have talked about this, and... Right, and, and Doug Bender and I have talked about this, and now, going in the future, on the next agenda, I'm gonna have an agenda item that says how committee members are picked, and every year, you know, we may actually have to just agendazize it, have everybody come in and say, who wants to be on the committee? If we have to pick names out of a hat, whatever it might be. But, we need some change going on, especially, you know, how this is gonna work. I don't have the answers yet, we're working on it right now.
It just makes me weep.
We did have a town center meeting after the CDC. A few things that, what we didn't talk about, we're talking about some charging stations within the, that is, we are moving forward with that, we're looking at what can the city do to assist the residents, I mean, the, the business owners and having people come in here and make it a destination place. What the complaint was, is that no one, everyone is coming out, say, of the post, and no one's walking down the sidewalk to go buy the green pear, or to go to the beauty supply store, or to go to scraps. So, they're not going to another store, they're just coming to Ralph's, getting in their car, they're going home. So, what can we do to attract the people to stay at the center a little bit longer? And Jennifer's working a little bit with that, I know Tyler's working with it, and we're trying to take their suggestions.
Popcorn cart.
It could be that, you know, it could be twinkle lights in a tree, I mean, something to attract them to stay.
A popcorn cart would get me.
Electric charging stations, no one has electric cars today.
That would get me too.
Uh-huh, nobody.
A charging station with a popcorn cart, and I'm here.
I like that, too.
Um, one of the issues that came up from Bagelme, which is lovely, on Friday afternoons and certainly the half-days, he absolutely loves the business and loves the kids, but about 20% of the, of the children are destructive, and he has asked if we can have the sheriff, you know, drive by on Fridays, 'cause it, it's been quite bad lately. So, he did ask us for that, and we're gonna do that. And, I think, we had a public utilities meeting also, too.
Put your mic down.
I thought it was interesting, the, the breakdown of the, of the bad actors was what, what, well, it's over half are girls.
Yeah, they're 20% most, yeah.
Girls, it's not the boys so much, it's the girls that are-
Wow.
It was very interesting, it was, oh, yeah.
Bagelme destruction is girls?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Girls destroyed anything?
Yeah. Well, we had a public utilities meeting, Brad attended also, we met with Republic Services. When the residents get their trash bill, on the top of the trash bill, it says Villa Park Disposal, that will be changing where the Villa Park disposal name will be coming off, and it's gonna be saying Republic Services from now on. They've just, they've done this now with all their small little communities, so it's the same company, it's always been Republic Service, they're just removing the Villa Park name, and that's it.
I wanna know what destruction the girls do.
They did get a de-.
I'm serious, I've never, I'm honest, I don't know. What if they go destroy?
They jump, they jump on the walls with their feet, I mean, they, there's just, it's mischief, it's mischief.
Jump on the walls.
Yeah, with their feet, they're, they got their skateboards, and they're banging against the wall.
I'm listening boys up.
It's 20%, he loves them, he's there every Friday, he just asks for little assistance.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna try and give it to them.
I'd ask.
He said when, when the police, the police roll by, they, they straighten up.
They straighten up, huh?
Sure.
Temporarily.
We're getting close. All right, thank you all for those informative reports. Finally tonight, Jared, is there a report from the Villa Park team on any items of interest?
A couple things I do wanna bring up. This Thursday at 4:00 PM here in this room, we're gonna have a pipeline safety town hall meeting, where Kinder Morgan, who operates the high-pressure trolling pipeline on Wanda and SoCal Gas, will come in for essentially a Q and A session with the community. Something we haven't done before, and, and I think it's gonna go well, we're looking forward to that one. And then on October 30th, Wednesday's the Halloween Fest in the town center here, starts at 4:30 PM and continues throughout the night, usually ends around 7, 7:30, and I know I'll be there again, this time with a little kid.
Oh, what's she gonna be?
You know, I don't know. The wife at the end of-
Always fun.
Last year, some of the holiday sales picked up a dozen outfits, so whichever one she fits in and looks best in, I'd imagine.
Don't give up your anonymity, Jared. Don't tell anybody.
Exactly. It's the winning cost.
Stay safe.
If I could just add on to the town center report, Bagelme wanted to make sure that they weren't being singled out, that they do definitely enjoy the students coming to Bagelme after school, and that the problem is inherent throughout the center. And so, other business owners were also saying that they noticed students behind some of the buildings and graffiti and things are probably what were most likely to see happening in the center. So, just a little shout out to Bagelme, please send your kids still, so long as they're respectful and take care of property, Bagelme definitely wants them there. And, just since I spoke up-
Those darn girls.
Sorry?
Darn girls causing trouble.
That's what I've always thought. Anyways, October is Community Planning Month, and so, if you haven't had an opportunity yet, on the Orange section of the American Planning Association, we have great places in the OC to identify what great planning is happening in Orange County, and of course, I made sure that Villa Park has their great place, which is our town center, and acts as a great hub for our community to meet and gather and enjoy being around our community. So, take a look when you get a chance, and you can see other great places in the, in Orange County as well.
Thank you, Jennifer, that's all? Awesome. All right, so, tonight, we are gonna adjourn our meeting in memory of Judy Johnson and Paula German, who, again, passed recently, and our next regular council meeting will be on Tuesday, November 19th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Have a good night, thank you.